I got an expert agenda on the stage.
I'm going to call this meeting of the Monongay County Board of Education to order. Please rise for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay Superintendent, tonight we have, we're going to start the meeting off with recognitions at University High School FFA.
Yes, who's going to get us going?
Me.
All right, welcome.
Can I just speak here?
You've got to be at the podium, please.
Before you use this.
No.
Either way.
Good evening, I would like to thank the Board of Education for welcoming us and allowing us to present today. I'm Mrs. Porter Lenhart, the Agriculture Teacher and FFA Advisor at University High School. Agricultural education encompasses classroom and laboratory, the National FFA Future Farmers of America Organization, and supervised agriculture experience. Each component combines to create the program as a whole as set forth by our state and national standards. I would like to highlight a few things that we are doing this year. Within our classrooms, students are able to become completers in both agribusiness systems and plant systems. Both pathways enable learners to obtain a certification and course at graduation. Each course taught builds upon the next, starting with Introduction to Agriculture and building to our simulated workplace courses, which are Horticulture, Greenhouse, and Agricultural Mechanics. Within these courses, students actively create a working portfolio, which includes a cover letter, resume, letters of recommendation, and other credentials such as OSHA 10 certifications that is a lifetime card to be utilized on actual job sites that they earn throughout the course. They then apply an interview for their job within the simulated workplace and fulfill that position in the laboratory setting. They must work with their peers and community members to effectively perform tasks to ensure a successful business. Their portfolios and life skills gained within the workplace are tangible items that can be used post-graduation for career placement in the real-world work setting. This year, we have expanded our career readiness program and our simulated workplaces are doing refurbishing projects, welding basics, and greenhouse production where students actively run the greenhouse business and I step back as a facilitator. A second component to our program includes supervised agriculture experience. Throughout the program, students are utilizing their skills outside the classroom as productive members of society. These projects include entrepreneurships, owning and operating your own business. Many of our students have their own lawn care business and a handyman service. Production, producing foods or fibers. Some members raise chickens for meat and/or eggs, lambs, goats, rabbits, and other items such as forage crops and vegetable production. Placement, actively working in a job setting. We have members working at Rural King, Walmart, Kroger, McDonald's, and local restaurants. Research and exploratory, performing research projects and exploring various career opportunities through job shadowing and volunteering. One student does horse therapy volunteer work and another shadows and volunteers for the ACCA which rehabilitates wild birds. Students can attain classroom credit for completing such projects and documenting their experiences. These projects are imperative, not only for career readiness, but to gain knowledge of real-world and hands-on experiences. The final component of a complete and successful agriculture program is the National FFA Organization as represented by the FFA, Future Farmers of America. Today, FFA members and officers have come to share with you some of the things that they are involved in, what agriculture and agricultural education does for them, and how they are involved in service projects within our community. Currently, there are 6,046 active and enrolled FFA members in the state of West Virginia, and that number will increase during the spring semester. The overall number of agricultural programs are increasing throughout the state with 112 instructors, over 86 programs, and 49 West Virginia counties. This prepares students for more than 235 unique careers in the science, business, and technology of agriculture, food, and natural resources. Agricultural education also provides over $20,000 in state and national scholarships and awards and provides co-curricular leadership development essential for students. I am proud to serve as an educator and advisor for these students. I am passionate about the FFA motto which states, "Learning to do, doing to learn, earning to live, living to serve." The young adults that you are about to hear from are our future. As without their skills and knowledge, agriculture would not progress and a world without agriculture simply would not be, as agriculture is the backbone of society. Again, thank you for your time and having us here. Now, I would like to introduce our 2023-2024 FFA Officer Team led by President Jones Stanton.
I'm Jones Stanton, this year's FFA President. I'm happy to say that the last year's Mother's Day Plant Sale was a success, having most plants that we've had so far. And we're happy to provide that service and that to the local community. So far this year, we've had at least one event per week up to date. One of those events we did was a fall mom sale for the first time, which was a profitable success. One of those events this year will be raising plants for the Mother's Day Sale again, and that will start in January. Through these ag programs, I've been able to learn how to speak, lead, and have gained an OSHA 10 card, and I am a double completer certificate in ag businesses and plant pathways. Thank you for your continued support of our program. Please take these apples as a token of our appreciation.
Hi everyone, I'm Ensley Batten and I'm this year's Vice President. So this year, some of our officers had an amazing opportunity to go to South Middle School and introduce some of the students to FFA and the agriculture industry. We talked to Mr. Overstreets Career Exploration Class about career opportunities in the agriculture field. We spoke to the students about what FFA does in the community, how agriculture affects our economy, how they can get involved, and what agriculture classes we offer at UHS. The South students took a lot of interest in what we were doing, so it was really cool to see these younger kids being so engaged in agriculture and FFA. We played some games with them and got to teach them about what we love, so thank you again for your support to our program. It has a great impact on our community members and on our students.
Good evening, my name is Leigh Mathias. This is my first year in FFA and I am a senior at UHS, and I am this year's reporter. In August, a generous supporter of the FFA, Mr. Cheslock and his family have allowed the students to harvest corn stalks in their field. We cut, transport, and bundled all of the corn stalks as a group activity. We had about 25 members show up and worked hard to support the FFA as well as community members who came to help. We were able to help this family cut their corn stalks and they donated to our chapter for us to sell as fall decorations and medifit from. We sold 100 bundles of 10 stalks to Southern States, which is a longtime local supporter of the FFA chapter. It is imperative that we keep and maintain these positive relationships with local community members and businesses, as these are staples within our area truly encompass what it means to be involved with local residents. Thank you again for your continual support of the program that not only impacts our students, but also our community as a whole.
Hi, I'm Josephine Tanton and I'm the Secretary of University High's FFA chapter this year. I would like to touch on the importance of our chapter hosting a regional leadership night. On September 7th, our chapter, including over 30 members, helped host a regional leadership night with local FFA chapters including Preston High, Clay Patel, Marion, and Bridgeport. This event was extremely successful. We had more participation than last year, not only in our club, but in other chapters' attendance as well. Our leadership night consisted of different classes hosted by our state officers on leadership, team building, and communication, and a social hour afterwards. This was a great honor due to the fact that these classes are typically only offered at an exclusive state convention. We were able to meet other FFA members, build relationships, strengthen our club, and improve our state's value of FFA. We are thankful for their BOE's continued support of our community outreach and growth as a chapter.
Hello, my name is Christian Walls. This year's tractor driving was held at Preston High School. This is my second year driving, and last year I placed third in regionals, and this year I placed first. Both years I'll be moving on to states. It's a different experience getting to see all the different levels of experience throughout the counties, as some of us do this every day after school, or some that just mow grass on occasion. Altogether, it's a good fun experience and good to meet other chapters. Thank you.
My name is Nathan Wolf, I'm the Sentinel of the 2024 Club. This is my second year in FFA, and I plan to continue in the future. We do multiple fundraisers throughout the year, and so far we've had one per week. I'm here to talk about apple sales. We've sold over 367 bushels this year, and we greatly appreciate anyone who supports our club. After we're done selling them, we bring them back to UHS and sort them, and then we either deliver them or the sellers can pick them up. Thank you for your support.
Hello, my name is Reyna Schnapp. This is my second year in FFA, and I am the chapter's parliamentarian this year. We have always put lots of time and effort into putting our floats together for parades. We take good consideration to pick out the theme each year and work together to make it come to life. Recently this year, we got first place at the University High Homecoming Parade and Buckwheat Festival Parade with a design of horse and wagon. While this is a team-building experience, we like to do this to expose the community to what the FFA does and what we like work together.
Hello everyone, my name is James Robinson. I am the Chaplain of the UHS FFA this year. I'm going to be talking about the Mobile Ag Lab. Last, the past week, and the current week, we have been helping the West Virginia Farm Bureau by teaching kids from Cheat Lake Elementary School the importance of agriculture. This is the year, this is the year our chapter has asked to help, and we have loved working with the kids. Our chapter has been a lot more involved with younger students, and we've helped them gain a better understanding of FFA and agriculture. We have loved this new opportunity to talk to elementary schools and middle schools' students about what we do and how it affects our community. Thank you for supporting us and what we're doing to this community.
Hello, my name is Kate Schreiber, and I am the Student Advisor of University High's Future Farmers of America. I am going to be talking about the Mon County Fair. Each year, FFA and 4-H members produce an animal to show and sell at the Mon County Fair. This year, I got the grand champion laying hen and grand champion oyster. Each year, since I lost a lot of time, each their animals. How to make sure our animals are getting the proper food and training them to sit, to stand on the judge. For the judge, we make sure about showing any questions that the judges or viewers might have. If you have not been to our fair, I would recommend you coming and seeing us and animals. You might even get to pet one of them. I am now a two show my fair each year. I each one of you here. Thank you for having us tonight.
Hi, my name is Ashton Moore. I'm a junior at UHS. This is my second year of being involved with FFA, and my officer position is historian. As a historian, my job is to document our events and create a scrapbook. I created what you are viewing now for this meeting and later on for a banquet to show the active participation we do during school as well as during the summer. We recently participated in a community event, Southern States Fall Fest and Kitty Days. Fortunately, it was successful despite the bad weather we had. We welcomed many kids as well as adults to our table where we set up a kids' game with prizes, FFA t-shirts and apple forms, and an ed-growth activity that kids can interact with. Participating in Southern States not only helped our club become known, it helped the community learn what it means to be a team, to understand agriculture, and to learn about our club. Southern States helped us connect with the community, increase sales, and lastly, strengthen our relationships with other vendors, the community, and the Southern States employees who helped make it possible. We thank the community, our fellow members who were able to attend, and you guys for listening. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Bryson Sprouse, and I am the Executive at Large for the University High School FFA, and I'm here to talk to you about one of our award-winning events, State Convention. The last two years, we've had two straight qualifiers. Nolan Wolf, graduate of the 2023 class, who qualified for state after placing first place at Preston's High Tractor Driving Event. Then we have Christian who qualified for states back-to-back years. This year, he took first-place spot in zero turn. Last year, he placed third. In just a short time, he has improved a lot, and he is only a junior and will have more opportunities to take UHS FFA to states. Now that you've heard about our qualifying members, I'm going to talk to you more about the event itself. The State Convention is held in July in Ripley, West Virginia. FFA chapters come from all over the state to compete to move on to Nationals. There is multiple competitions that members can compete in. There is tractor driving, business, speech competitions, and judging competitions and more. In this slide, it shows our upcoming regional and community events that our FFA chapter is participating in. So that was the events that we have done, the events that we have coming up. I would also like to say, thank you guys for your continued support. I know that we've said that a couple times previous, but we're going to hand you guys out some apples, and then we'll allow you to continue on with your meeting.
I'd like to take a second to talk to you guys about the excitement in agriculture in north-central West Virginia that the bottling plan is bringing, and it's going to actually increase agriculture. So agriculture is becoming, as it faded off in the past, part of our future, and it's something we're even working on with our Renaissance Academy, trying to figure out how we can work that in there. We appreciate you guys coming out, and you guys all did a great job speaking tonight, and keep up the good work, and thank you for sponsoring this group. We really appreciate that.
Yay, apples!
Throw them down there, somebody will get them. Throw them down there, somebody will take them. And I would actually, I usually tell the students at this point it's a good time to run off, but tonight with the Renaissance Academy presentation, it would really be a good one for you guys.
one for you guys to stick around for and see what the exciting thing in the future, and it's the next thing up. Unless we have delegations? Any? Sorry. So our next thing, superintendent, is reports discussion and follow-up action, and it's the Renaissance Academy.
Yes, it is, Mr. Laitl. We have got a design update for you. I have provided some executive content for you, but we're going to turn it over to our friends from the DLR Group to bring us some exciting news. So, John?
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. Good evening, Chair Laitl, members of the board, Dr. Campbell, senior staff. We're delighted to be back here again. It's always exciting to bring a Renaissance Academy to you. Today, we met with a group of students at M-Tech. I think you recall that last time we came before you, we'd met with students from the three high schools, and as usual, we learned a lot. We had some very engaged students, and we did have, we did postcards like we did the last time, and one of them said, let me get to the right place in my notes here, "Learning has become enjoyable." This is a postcard from 2040, sending them back to themselves in 2023. "Learning has become enjoyable. I look forward to my school every day, waking up and going to an updated, state-of-the-art school." So everyone's excited about this. It's great that we've got students here this evening to hear about what we're doing. We promised you that we would bring you the design this evening, or where we are with the design. Camila will give that to you shortly. Want to remind you that we've developed five guiding principles of agility, agency, restoration, transformation, and relevance, which I hope you will see in what we present to you tonight. So currently, we have a team of people working on estimating the total project cost of this project, how much it will cost to build, and how much all the other costs will be, site development, permits, and all of those other things that go into the building, furniture and equipment. We are intending to bring that cost to you on December the 12th, but before we do that, we have to complete it. We have to make sure that we have everything accounted for, that we have all the right contingencies in there and everything before we present you with a number. Dr. Campbell will have that in advance of the meeting and likely share those numbers with you. So at this point, we are not adjusting or continuing design work. We are waiting to see where we are with those costs and being prepared to make some adjustments if we have to find ways in which to reduce the cost of the project. So by the time we get to December the 12th, I anticipate we will have all of that resolved for you. So I would like to turn it over to Camila Berman, who is the lead designer with Heidi Lou from our office of the project. Camila, take it away, please.
Next slide, please. In our update design, we'll review the site design, and then we'll talk about the program quickly to let you know what adjustments we've made to the program, and then we'll show you a few, three designs that we did and discussed with the leadership committee and the stakeholders, just as a way to explain the breadth of thinking before we show you the final, well, the in-progress building design, which is the last item. So there are a set of slides here, but at the end of the slideshow, we'll pull up an animation that will fly through the building and give us a better sense of the spatial qualities of the building and the site. Next slide, please. There is an interest in being able to see the building, the Renaissance Academy, and the future development that is on the site from the nearby interstate Route 79. On the left-hand side of this slide, you see a dashed line, and that is the property on the site. And we've studied the view sheds onto the site and off from the site, and as you come southbound and northbound from 79, there are a lot of great vistas. The best one happens to be when you are in your car looking directly due west, and on the upper right-hand side, you can see how the site, which is the top of the hill there, is really open in an expansive view to passersby. So we think it's an exciting opportunity to showcase what you're doing for the students and what the students will be learning. Below that, there's a site section just to show that indeed the site is higher than the neighboring highway, and that position allows it to rise above even the trees that are down in the Blue Horizon Valley. Next slide, please. Looking at the site plan, we're giving you a copy of this PDF so that you can study it. The site plan shows in the center of the site, the proposed Renaissance Academy. On the right, you see the highway coming down, just cutting into the slide, and the entrance from the right-hand side, which is east from Blue Horizon, and that entrance would follow the contours and make its way up the hill as it needs to contend with the grade. But once on top of the hill, the idea is that the main road would connect from the east all the way to the west-hand side of the site. In the center, in the pink rectangular shape, is the proposed Renaissance Academy. Just to the left of that, you'll notice some other boxes. We're thinking about how one might provide future additions to the Renaissance Academy as that grows and interest grows. To the south of the main road cutting from the east to the west, you'll see opportunity for additional site development. That might be new programs that you don't have in your vision right now, dormitories, middle school programs, whatever may come up. We think that the site has the flexibility and agility to take that on. You'll also notice that there's a road in front of, below, to the south of the building with a loop road, which would be a place for parents to drop off, visitors to come and park, but there's also a road that goes to the north or above the building in the center, and that is both access, service access, that leads to additional parking, and also so that you can get equipment and materials and supplies to the shops in the school. Not shown here, but on the west-hand side of the site, the panhandle, if you will, of the site, there's definitely an opportunity to build additional facilities, buildings, transportation, fueling stations, et cetera, with the access from the west to those facilities. Next. The program, if you could scroll down there. Thank you. We are looking at one hundred and thirty-five thousand gross square feet, so that includes the wall thicknesses and circulation and the elevators and stairs and all of that. We have been working with the leadership committee to understand our original assumptions to make sure that we know what the building spaces should be and to right-size those spaces so that they fit the current vision. Additionally, you'll see how these, I know you can't read the names, but you'll see how the groups of these rooms are arranged so that there's a very specific way that we're thinking about adjacencies. So it's not a hodgepodge, obviously, but a very thoroughly thought-out way of arranging spaces and places for teaching and learning. So we had worked with three conceptual designs, and you'll see these little vignettes up here on the screen. What we did with the leadership committee and with the stakeholders is to understand what was the best of each design and to bring those together into a final concept design, which we'll share with you. So on the left, you see a building that was really about having places for students to walk through the building, explore and discover as they're going through, seeing what other students are doing in other places, and finding a lot of places to collaborate. We sort of thought about it as an indoor playground for CTE learning. In the middle was another concept where we were looking at the idea of entering the building at a starting point but having a final destination, which is that vista that looks back over the highway. And on the right-hand side, you'll see something that is an idea around being able to stand in one spot of the building, turn around and see as much, many different programs as you can. So we took those three and started to think about how we combine them into one final concept that embodies your vision. Next. The other thing that we're thinking about as we think about the guiding principles and transformation and restoration is what is the history on this site. On the slide here is the mind map of the activity on the site, and if you'll notice the darker shaded blocks and sort of parallelograms, those are pillars of remaining earth under the site, and we will refer to that and also to the fact that the landscape has changed over time as an illusion in the architecture. So allow us that poetry a little bit, but we think that it'll be very interesting for not only the initial concept design, but for students and for users of the building in the future to be able to give tours of their own building and explain why the building was shaped the way it was and what it means on this site. So a little Google Earth sleuthing allows us to see that over the last twenty years how the site has changed. On the top, you see an aerial photograph in 2003, and if you can see the arrows there, we're trying to point out that originally there were three high points on the site. Through the mining activity, let's scroll down a little bit more. So a diagrammatic section shows this idea that from 2003 to now, the bottom, the proposed, the idea that a building can live where the mountain used to be, and that the collection of program spaces that we talked about can be seen as a collection of pillars, if you will, underneath a roof that is evocative of the mountain that was there before. Next. So another diagram, this time in the shape of a plant, you start to see that there is an idea about locating these programs around a central space. Also, the dashed lines that are running from the left to the right, those are indicative of the way that the landscape slopes and changes. And what if a building, when you went from the outside to the inside, you still had a landscape on the inside? And I'll show you what we mean by that. Next. Let's look at some schematics of the floor plan. So the first floor plan of the concept that we'll show you shows in the dark triangle on the bottom left, that was an entrance, it's an entrance, and you're entering into the west side of the building. On the south side of the building, below the yellow, there's two stories of classroom and instructional studios along with student support, and you'll see some of the CTE programs named on there. On the north side of the building are the CTE shops. So you'll see things like HVAC, plumbing, welding, auto tech, and those are arranged in a different way so that they have future flexibility as programs change and we need to move shop walls to create some shops bigger, smaller, et cetera. In the middle, in the yellow, is that central commons, which is now not as long as it was on some other schemes, and if you enter from the bottom left, on the left-hand side, where that arrow is, you come in, you turn right, you're looking through the end of the building. There's a room at the far end that says Industry Expo. You're actually looking through that room back out to 79, and that is the combination of those three original schemes that we showed you. In the middle, on the yellow, you'll see diagonal lines. Those are a series of gentle terraces and ramps so that the building's completely accessible that allow students to have a way of navigating that common space, so it's not just one big floor, but you'll see a lot of different, interesting places for students to collaborate, for classes to go outside of the regular learning studio, and provide great opportunity for variety of space. Let's look at the next floor, the next slide here. What you're seeing here with all those Xs on the top, that's the high base space, and so now we're just looking down into shops, but along the yellow represents the second floor, that student services right in the center. So the idea is that all of the support mechanisms and the collaboration areas can be interspersed among the classrooms. Next. Okay, we'll get into the good stuff. This is a section through the building, and in the middle of the building, you'll see some columns. That is the central commons, and you'll notice that this roof that we're cutting through undulates and forms a different kind of shape for the roof, and that's evocative of the landscape of the mountain that was there. You'll also notice on the left, which is the south side, there's two stories of studios and classroom spaces, but if you're on the second floor, you can look across the commons over the roof of those lab spaces, I'm sorry, the shop spaces, the CTE spaces. Idea is that wherever you are in the school, you've got a connection to nature, you've got a connection to the landscape, which is really something we want to celebrate here, and you'll see that more in our fly-through. So if you go to the next slide, I think that's just teeing up the fact that we'll, let's pull up the animation and walk through it together. And it's a three-minute animation, and I'll try to keep up. Here we are going up the hill from 79, and you can see the building and its organic roof draping over the commons and on to those boxes of studios that, again, are evocative of the mine pillars below. You'll notice that the roof can lift up and be a really attractive, inviting school for students as they come, right? So it's not the CTE shop that's in the back of the school, it's really something that is a destination. On the north side, which is south here, you'll see those big boxes. Those are the CTE shops, and the reason that they're so regular is so that we can have that agility, that flexibility, and make sure that we're following the guiding principles about the school being able to change. You'll notice that there are some places where the roof pops up for some skylights, and we just passed the agricultural lab, and let's walk on to the inside of the building, where as we're entering in from the south side, a nice sunny entrance, we'll step into that commons, which was fairly linear and planned, but I think you'll see that it feels like one really energetic, interactive space. To the left, we've got the CTE shops, and on the right, you're starting to see how there's this gentle terracing on the inside of the floor and how there are opportunities to be in the commons or adjacent to the commons to create a great variety of spaces and different ways for students to collaborate and work together in various size groups. So lots of visibility both into the studios and into the shops so that that kind of learning is on display and can pique the curiosity of the students. Towards the eastern end, or the end closer to the highway, we get to what might be considered the heart of the commons. Now, there are still opportunities to be near this commons and to see all of the great stuff that's happening in the CTE shops, but you'll notice a large screen. This could be a place for student presentations, for industry partners to come and do job fairs, et cetera. As we look back to where we came, you'll notice that there are the student services above, but also places for collaboration above that are looking down into the commons so that no matter where you are in the building, or no matter where the students are, they can see each other, right? They can see and be seen and be excited about the learning. Also, it's an opportunity for teachers to model that kind of collaborative working environment and be seen as they collaborate together. So this will pause here for the moment, and we'll just look back down to where we came. At the far end, you can't really see it, is the highway, but as we zoom out, you'll get a good sense of how that's all come together to create an experience that we think is unique, certainly embedded in the principles that we've been discussing with you and your stakeholders. That concludes the presentation. I'd like to open it up for any questions or comments.
Is that the view from the interstate?
Yes, sir.
So how many students could the building accommodate in one day? Because I think part of the work that's going to have to be done by CNI and others as we put this together is how this is really going to work for all students to be able to avail themselves when they're in high school of this facility, when a lot of them are still going to have a lot, you know, we're on that block schedule, they're still going to have a lot of their block at their home high school, and then they'll be able to be here. So how many students can this facility, as drawn right now, accommodate in one day?
So it really depends on how it's used and what the programs are. We've calculated the capacity to be somewhere between seven hundred and fifty and eight hundred students at a time, maximum. We've looked at the number of students you have in high school, the A-B Day program, so that's, you know, and then, you know, how many of those four years those students would actually attend classes at Renaissance Academy.
Well, I mean, because that's the issue. I think that's going to be a whole different... I think that's going to be a whole different kind of conversation with our high schools and our academicians as to how this can work for everyone to be able to use it. Because I really think that's the only way logically we're going to be able to have the community support we need for this massive of a project. Plus, I think if we want every student to be able to, as we know, what someone thinks they want to do in their freshman year and what they want to do in their senior year is going to be totally, might be totally different. So you have to have some availability of different programming for the same student. So it's really exciting, but it's also really scary because it's a huge project and we have to, this has to be approached just the right way.
It's for everyone.
That's right. It's for everyone, and this will also create, open up other spaces in the county for the middle school to be able to have more hands-on opportunities at our technical center that we will be leaving. So, I mean, that's a whole different kind of conversation as we try to have more hands-on opportunities for everyone, middle school and high school.
And I believe also, as adult education in evenings and possibly at weekends, how can we view the whole campus as a campus, as a destination where community members come for other types of events and fairs and things like that? This is an asset for the entire community beyond the students, high school students in Mon County.
Even business, I could see business doing in-service for certain areas of their businesses, trying to partner, do that in the evening or weekends even, because of the different amenities that'll be at this facility that they would need. So...
We've seen these buildings being used for product launches, for presentations to politicians, for all sorts of things above and beyond the prime purpose of being a school. We do believe that if we build something like this, it should be used as much as reasonably possible. That's the ultimate sustainable thing to do, not too much that we break it, but as much as reasonably possible.
I'm curious to ask, how much did the project that you worked on in Colorado influence your design here?
It's an evolution, I would say.
Okay.
That was probably the first one. There's one that's under construction now in Michigan. And then, you know, this is really the next in the sequence. We learn from each one, and we change with each one. And each one is really unique, depending on the needs of the school district, the needs of the local and regional economy, and just where they are. We haven't built on a minefield, I shouldn't say minefield, that's not the right term, on a former mine before. And that brings a whole new series of challenges and excitement, too, because in those guiding principles, we have restoration, we have transformation, we have to recognize what was there before and how important that was to the economy of West Virginia and to the lives of the local residents of the county.
I would be interested, we have teachers in here and students, does anybody want to speak to that? Are we allowed to let them come to the podium and ask questions?
Sure.
We have them here.
A big part of this whole process is the inclusion of all.
Right, right.
Students, what are you guys thinking, besides, how many in here are juniors and seniors? And we'll be gone before this is built.
We still value your opinion.
This could be your legacy to the county, your opinions.
Any thoughts? I mean, I'm seeing pasture fields. Can you go back up to the mic?
They can pass that mic.
Yep, here's one. Hey. Mr. Tanton.
That way you can just pass it around if anybody else wants to talk. It should be on.
Here it is. You don't have to go back there now.
That's okay. That's a good place to be.
Your leash is off.
So my question is, for this project, is, I was already looking at the automotive setup because I currently am working in a mechanic shop, so I kind of see what the reality, really working in a mechanic shop is like. One, I dislike the idea of using glass all over it because, especially when you're using, especially if you're going to be doing full rebuilds on motors and things like that, sometimes, not that it happens all the time, but sometimes things fly away. Or like, let's say you're doing like semi-tires, sometimes what can happen is, especially if you're using a two-piece rim, what can happen is they can blow apart. And if you have a shop built on a glass, that's going to be a real problem. And also, I didn't see a lot of space to either unload, unload and reload tires, like you have to have a bay to be able to do that. You want to be, I mean, if you want to be able to full-scale, you want to be able to back up a truck up to a bay and unload and reload your new and used tires. I think that's a big concern. And I didn't see a big parking lot for new projects, because oftentimes you'll have people bring something in, and either they leave it or they need to wait. So you have people, it'd be good to have an idea to have some kind of way to have a place for students, not students, but people with their automotive, like with their cars, to have a place to wait or a place to leave their cars if they want to go elsewhere while they're waiting for their projects to be completed. And that's the only real big concern I saw. And then also, I didn't see any student parking, like, at any high school in this local area, you look at it, even the UHS, our parking lot is massive, but it's still full almost every single day. And in this area, one of my concerns also is, 800 students can get full really quickly because in this area, the high schools have to keep expanding because more and more people keep coming to this area because it's an area with a lot of potential to grow, larger than it is currently. So those are the only big concerns I saw, but with the automotive, I had quite a bone to pick, and I was really brewing on that while I was watching.
They're the ones to talk to.
They're hearing you back there. Anybody else?
I don't care.
No, yes, speak. I don't.
Just from a teacher's perspective, this is the first that I've heard, we've heard rumors about it, this is the first kind of tangible thing we've seen and heard about it. I don't know who "we" is, who's going to this. But I encourage you all, whoever is in charge of all of this, to come speak to the teachers that are currently teaching this. I think that was kind of Jones's point, right? To see what works well for the classrooms and lab spaces that we're currently using, what doesn't work well, and what's great for the student learning, because this is about students. So while design is great and aesthetics is fun, what works well for what's happening in the classrooms and what are those teachers in need of? And the first thing I said to Jones, I said, "Where's the greenhouse?" You have an agriculture space, but most of my teaching is not necessarily done inside the classroom. So that was the first thing that popped into my head, and I don't want to speak for everybody. I know that there's a lot of career and technical teachers that probably have a lot of things that they would love to say, but my encouragement is to come, talk to us and see what works well and what doesn't work well, and this is about the kids. So if any more students, I know that this is kind of an intimidating setting, but I'm sure that I'll hear their opinions tomorrow in class. But if anybody else wants to say anything, Enslie does. Yeah, this is about them. Thank you for letting us speak.
I'm Enslie Batten, and I wanted to talk a little bit about what Ms. Walker was talking about, how like, if you would have told me my eighth grade year that I was planning on continuing an agriculture career after high school, I would have told you that you are insane. So I was wondering how the education would change with the students and how, like, if I decided to switch from maybe like a shop class to more of an agriculture class, how that would be like an aspect that I could do? So, thank you.
Anybody else? That speaks to one of our conversations we constantly have, is that this needs to become a nine-through-12 facility so that kids have an opportunity to take and get your certification in ninth and 10th grade, and then pick another certification 11th and 12th grade, or change as you go. And what, one instruction we've given to the designers is absolute flexibility, absolute open-mindedness about what this design's going to be. And the fact that education today and education in 10 years is two total different things. It's not, it's not going to be, and I said this in front of the School Building Authority yesterday, when you think about education and a teacher standing in front of the classroom and lecturing to 20 kids, that is not the future of education. It absolutely is not. So greenhouses, you got something you guys didn't see? I see a milking parlor with automatic scrapers, and I see, this thing is so big that the agricultural part of this is an exciting thing for the future. It's not limited, and a greenhouse is something that would be absolutely right there with it. I mean, this is really a preliminary look at what it is. And after we get this together and we start doing the nuts and bolts of the design, and the true design of, I thought that, hopefully, when the tire blows up, the kid's safer than the glass, but I worry more about the kid. Yeah, this is one of the things that we've told, we've instructed the design team and the administration here, is to get as much feedback from community members and school and teachers, there's a lot of teachers involved in this, and there's a lot of people within the schools involved in this, to get the feedback and try to design this whole thing very open-mindedly, because no one really knows. It's the first time I've ever given a speech somewhere, and that you always prepare in knowledge, you always take time to prepare for a speech, and you have to have subject knowledge. Someone called me eight minutes before I got somewhere and said, "Can you speak about the Renaissance Academy?" I said, "I guess so." But the point, my point was, I don't have knowledge about what this will be, besides it's going to be a flexible space that's going to answer future education and needs of society. And two, I didn't, I mean, and I didn't have time to prepare, only at eight minutes. But it's one of those things, it's such an open canvas right now. It's such an exciting thing for the future of Mon County. And it's an exciting thing because we're ahead of the rest of the state. Now they start talking about middle school CTE. Why lose kids that want to talk? I shouldn't talk too much right here. But kids that are in seventh, eighth grade that want to get into CTE, why should they have to wait till they're a junior? Why should they be bored with education for three or four years when they can get to that point earlier and start that? That's the idea of the current M-Tech, is we're going to do a middle school CTE. That's the goal, is to just make this part hands-on learning, experiential learning, just part of education in Mon County. And it's actually the future of education. That's what we're hearing from our leaders in Washington DC, leaders across the state. That's exactly what this is, and that's what we're doing. So let me let these guys have the, okay, go ahead.
I have one more question.
I don't have the mic.
I would like to know something about, so you have a...
So it'll be recorded.
So we can record it.
So like I said, I have one other question also. So you have a building maintenance and you have a culinary program. What amount of the building maintenance, because that's the thing that's going on at our current M-Tech, you have kids that are in a building maintenance program, but when something breaks on the building, they call the maintenance team. Why isn't the building maintenance kids doing the building maintenance, and why aren't the culinary kids preparing food for the other kids? There's no better way to learn how to do something unless you're doing the actual thing. And another thing that I would like to say is also, with your thing where you're saying, "Why don't we get kids into CTE earlier?" And the thing I see, and I've seen with some of my friends, especially ones that have already finished the M-Tech program, what that M-Tech program has done is it allowed them to not go to college afterwards because their degree is not to the level of everyone else's. And so going through M-Tech, some of those kids, they've been stonewalled and not allowed to further their education due to the fact that they went through M-Tech instead of getting a regular degree, because a lot of them get a lesser degree, which does not allow them to go to college afterwards. That's why I would say that allowing kids to go to CTE earlier is potentially a dangerous thing, not a positive.
I'm Leigh Mathias again. I actually had a question. How is this going to work, like, with M-Tech? Like, is this a replacement of M-Tech, or is it going to work with M-Tech as like a second, bigger learning, like, facility, I guess?
This is a supercharged version of M-Tech. This is a, and I don't want to classify this as a career and technical education center because that's not what it is. This is a STEM facility so that we will have high-level science courses, technology courses, engineering courses, and math courses housed here so that your classmates, the best and brightest, will be able to attend and be able to participate in career and technical education courses, high-level career and technical education courses. That will prepare our students for high-paying careers. It will prepare them so that they will have the opportunity to continue their education in a four-year program if they so choose to do that. They'll have those credentials that will allow them to do that. So if you think of combining your AP science and math courses in the same facility with the best career and technical education courses that you can imagine, that's what's going to be in this facility.
Thank you so much.
I want to speak a little, okay, we got another one here.
Do I need to speak in that?
Yes, please.
So it'll be recorded.
It's the only way it's recorded on the...
My name's Ken Smedensky. I just have a couple of questions. I think I know the location of this, it's off of 19 on the right-hand side of One Hill, correct?
Yes.
Okay. How many acres are up there?
150-something, I think, approximately. The whole piece.
The whole, okay, I was just wondering, because I mean, if this is built in for expansion, you know, is there enough room up there?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, that was, just curious.
I just wanted to comment on the discussion about the eighth grade, you know, going there early. Nancy and I, what was it, 15 years ago, we were talking about that, and everybody used to say, "Well, that way they can go and figure out what they want to do in life." And I'd always say, and we discussed a lot, that they can go and find out what they don't want to do. So getting an early stab at it and realize, "Ah, this is maybe not what I want to do." It still gives them time to decide what to do in the future. And I think that's pretty important to figure out, because we go through life, you create your life from the mistakes that you've made, or most of us have anyway. The other question I had was, and I agree 100% with you, I've always said, "Hey, no, whenever we need something done, I always say, 'Can our kids at M-Tech make it?'" Or can we, so I'm all for, I'm right there with you on letting our students do whatever, you know, they can do, obviously some of the stuff you're not allowed to do. The other was maintenance on the building. What's the, or do you take that into consideration? Let's say we build this thing, it's like putting turf on the football field, it's all great, we don't have to mow it, but then we find out, you know, five years down the road, it's a huge expense to keep it up. So this building, the design of it, number one, what's the, your life expectancy of it with the maintenance that's going to be done? And have you thought about the cost of the maintenance?
So we thought definitely, I actually was responsible for a maintenance department for a school district, and so I got a lot of people talking in my ear about what was needed. And so I make very clear that maintenance is topmost. What is easy for them to maintain and what is easy for them to maintain at the level of technicians that you're able to hire as a school district? And so not only are we looking for mechanical systems that are energy efficient, we're looking for them to be easy to operate, maintain, and to change out. I've tried to stop looking at useful life of buildings and things because ultimately, if you're building a building, it should last as long as you need it, and that's why we want it to be flexible and adaptable, which we've already been talking about. Building systems, though, do need to be changed more often. You know, we say something HVAC systems in maybe 20, 25 years, but maybe that's not all of the components. So good maintenance will make that, make them last longer, and I've replaced systems that were 10 years old because they weren't being maintained properly, which is criminal. So it's a balance, but definitely maintenance within the capacities of the people that you are able to hire is incredibly important, and having things that are durable and you won't have to keep replacing.
I guess where I was headed with that was Nicole will have to budget so much for maintenance on this building. Is that a number that...
We will, we will develop that as we get further into the project, yes. We're looking right now, we're really looking at the, you know, the capital cost and then the soft costs that go with that. If we get into it further, we'll look at lifecycle costs and help you work that out.
Yeah, my question is, if you were looking at that, and at some point you'd be able to...
Yes.
She's vicious, she doesn't like that number. Yeah, that's one of them. I mean, we had schools within the past few years that we... Yeah, that's one, I mean, we had schools within the past few years that we have replaced. One was 85 years old, the other was 100 years old. So that's why I question.
So those buildings lasted a long time.
Yeah, well, the reason we had to change because you couldn't even put internet service through and those types of things. But thank you, that answers my question.
Well, my last question, I promise, it's my last one. Do we have any students coming to the stakeholder meetings?
Yes, absolutely. They've held stakeholder meetings with students at every high school.
Great.
And they had a group of students that they actually worked with today at M-Tech. And we've also done the teachers at all the high schools.
Great. Oh, I knew the teachers were, I wanted to make sure students were taken care of.
Yes, they've held two different days worth of all-day meetings with students.
And as we go to subsequent stages of design, after bond referendum in May, we will create with Ms. Tellarico's help, a board of students that we will regularly meet with as the project progresses. Some of them who are interested in that type of thing as a career, so they're learning for themselves, but also to give us feedback and to help them understand what we're doing to get their fellow students enthusiastic about it and to get feedback from them as well. So it's very important. I can't tell you how often we learn things from students that we would never have thought of that get incorporated into the projects we build. It's really important. They aren't inhibited like we are.
So I would think part of what we need to do, we're going to have to, unfortunately, everyone is not able to participate in these stakeholder meetings because of where they're held or what their jobs are, or they're in school or whatever. I would think we need to probably do just a couple evening forums about this whole thing to give, you know, a cross-section of the county to be able to come in and talk about this stuff.
Speak to it.
You know, ask questions and maybe mill around and, you know, have tables set up and just have some information out there that they could see and then, you know, give them an opportunity to talk about some of these things. Because I do think it's going to take a great cross-section of the community to have buy-in into this in order for this to be successful, to even get off the ground, to even get built. So I think some of the things we're interested in, we have talked about trying to work with federal reclamation dollars, with different programs that are in there that there are, you know, farm funds available to try to support the, some of the agricultural things, some of the shareholders' businesses that have worked on some of these committees. I know that they're trying to think outside of the box for funding so that we'll be able to build this to be the best it can be and last and be able to be, you're talking about us building more buildings, but what I see us doing is maybe as things change to redesign and change maybe even things inside the building to be able to hold the newest and, you know, best new thing that's out there. So I think that's probably something we're going to have to look at doing, so. It's just my opinion.
Well, we really appreciate your update this evening and it was an opportunity that the students were here. I've already heard feedback from M-Tech. Appreciated you guys being there and the ability to give some feedback. So I've already heard from.
Well, that's the first visit of many, I hope.
So it's going to be a good thing for the community. So we really appreciate you guys. So no more questions, let's move on to.
Thank you. Please for their questions and comments.
Yes, thank you guys.
Yeah, thank you guys.
I'm hoping they stick around for one more thing and then.
I don't know if they're going to.
This is the fun part.
Yeah. As Mrs. Walker said, we have to pay for this beautiful facility, so we've asked our friends to join us this evening and talk to us a little bit about the bond, provide the board with a bond update, so.
Okay. Hello, I'm Rob Steptoe with Cruz and Associates. We do public finance and advisory services and so we're working with the board and have been for quite some months now on putting together preliminary hypothetical financing costs in the form of annual debt service. But before I get to that, I would like to, if I can figure out if this works.
Excellent.
I think, there we go. I did it. All right. Okay. This slide is really important, I think initially for our conversation that I'll go into in just a second. And it's also based on actual data that is reported out of the Office of School Finance at the West Virginia Department of Education every year. So this is a breakdown or is part of the report that is put together every year by the Office of School Finance. And in particular, this is Montegalia County Schools, 2004, when the 2004 public school bonds were issued and the total assessed valuation at the time for all real and personal property in the county. So that is, that number you'll see there in the 2004 column is 2 billion 629 million 402913. And then you'll notice to the left currently, that assessed valuation, and that's in the report that came out this year, is 7 billion 6 million 654,954. So there's been quite an increase in the assessed value and the growth factor in the county. And then, in fact, it's about a 266% increase. Then the next line down is your debt limit, and this is a state constitutional requirement. And it requires that a school board only have capacity to issue debt up to 5% of that total assessed valuation. And so again, if you look at the 2004 column, back in 2004, you had the capacity to issue 131 million 471,45. Fast forward to 2024, and that is 350 million 332,748, which is also coincidentally 266% increase in your debt limit. Then the other numbers kind of flow through, the 53 million 865, 582 in 2004. That was, that was your outstanding debt. That was, I believe, the 2004 bonds and then maybe a little bit of a series 1999 was also that additional amount. The '04 bond issue was 50 million. And so now, go to the left there, you'll see 25 million 634,185. That's the balance on the 2004 bonds that were refinanced for debt service savings in 2019. So that is that data following along. So this is all, let me also point out here, the outstanding debt as a percent of assessed valuation, that's an important ratio and back in 2004, you were at 2.05% of that 5% limit or capacity. If you were hypothetically issue 110 million in new issuance or 125 million in new issuance, you would still be keeping roughly that same ratio as a percent of your total capacity. And that's because your assessed valuation has gone up significantly. So think of it as a bigger, you have more purchasing power, a bigger budget right now considerably than you did in 2004 at 131 million. You're now in the range of 350 million. So that, and we also have a population increase of about 24,000 since 2004. So those, I just wanted to orient everybody to that slide to see where you were in 2004 and where you are now in 2023, moving into 2024. Okay. So let's go to some preliminary hypothetical financing numbers. I'm going to jump and I'll explain why in just a second. Okay. You'll see that 7% not to exceed interest rate, okay? I'll come back to that. That's the second slide for the not to exceed. Okay. This is what I want to focus on. These are current interest rates as of last week on November 9th, I think was Thursday. And those interest rates are in a range of around, at the time, 4.15% and 4.70% depending on the loan term, whether that's a 30-year, 25-year, 20-year, or 15-year, and also to a certain extent, how much you're borrowing. The way to look at this calculation is you'll see up there the 7 billion 6 million number referenced earlier as the total assessed valuation. To the right of that is a weighting factor that's used for each classification of property. Class 2 property are owner-occupied residential homes. They are a two-times factor on the base, the one, the one times there, the class one, which is exempt from the levy because it's agriculture and timberland. So moving all the way to the right, you'll see those weighted factors multiplied by the total assessed valuation. I don't want to put everybody to sleep here, but that's how we get the total weighted assessed valuation. And each of these financing, these annual debt service numbers in column B would be divided into that 219 million 474,037 dollars to arrive at each of those levy rates. And the class 2 is shaded as owner-occupied. There's another calculation in there that I'll show you in a second, but back to the 7% not to exceed, we obviously want to avoid going back through the entire process by not having, not authorizing an interest rate that's conforming to where the market is. So the 7% not to exceed is a higher, more conservative interest rate. And when you factor in where rates are now compared to where the 7% is, that's a lot of interest cost, roughly 2.4 to 2.6 million in additional annual interest. But right now, the rates are, what would you say, Tom, in the four, the four and a half range?
Priced today at a 15-year at about 3.98%. So, and that's a significant increase. And when the board authorized it, it was up about 200 basis points or 2%. And so the markets can't move and that's, I think that's why Rob wants to stick with a conservative value there.
Yeah, that just want to, so we avoid having to go through this, we stay on schedule and we have a bond election order that Tom's going to explain in a second. That's why that would be in the bond election order, just to have that capacity if we had to issue bonds with that high of an interest rate, which we certainly hope to avoid. As I said, the rates are about four to four and a half depending, but again, we're not issuing bonds, we're not selling bonds for quite some time. So this is just for reference at this point. Did I go? Oh, no. There we go. Okay. Final slide. Okay. So you'll see MBC is Municipal Bond Commission and that's 110% adjustment. That's a requirement with the Municipal Bond Commission. So basically, you determine how much you need an annual debt service for the borrowing, but you have to account for exonerations, discounts, for taxpayer discounts for paying early and so forth. So they require a 10% adjustment there. So that's the column to follow and those annual debt service numbers. So you'll see the 30-year is roughly 7.6 million annual debt service, 25-years, 8283, then 20-year, so it goes, it's higher the shorter the term goes. So that would be higher levy rates annually if you structured the debt into a shorter 15, 20-year term and so forth. If you divide each of those MBC column annual debt service numbers for each of those hypothetical project fund amounts at 30-years, 25, 20, and 15 into that total weighted assessed value of 219 million roughly, you will get the levy rate in cents per $100 in assessed valuation. Then you multiply, there's a 60% of the appraised value, excuse me, is assessed constitutionally in West Virginia. So that calculation multiplied out cents times the 60%, and you'll see above the appraised value. That's to keep in mind, the appraised value scenarios here are $100,000 appraised value for a residential home, 200,000 appraised value residential home, and 300,000. I don't want to overburden everybody with numbers, but that seemed like a good median middle of the range on showing preliminary numbers. So then what you would levy on would be the next column. So assessed at 60%. So 60,000 is 60% of 100,000, 120,000 is 60% of 200,000 and so forth. So those are the levy rates for each of those project amounts at different loan terms and different appraised values of the homes. So this is just to help you all kind of see where the numbers are, certainly preliminary and certainly hypothetical at this point. And if you all have questions, I'm happy to take them, but at this point, maybe we transition to Tom to talk about the process. Anybody with questions? Mrs. Walker?
Of course I have questions.
Yes, ma'am.
So I know that the bonds that we're able to buy are based somewhat on your bond rating. And I know some of the counties have gone out and done their own bond ratings and gotten more favorable value than using the state number. So I just wondered about all that and I just want to say to them, so basically, we're trying to figure out how much is everyone going to have to pay a year if they own any of these homes, how much is it actually going to cost you?
Per year.
Per year to support building this big school. This is all this is about, is how if we go to the public and we say, we need X dollars to build this school, this is how much you will personally be contributing if you own a home at 100,000, 200,000, 300,000 dollars. That's all this is. It just sounds like a bunch of gobbledygook, but.
You practiced that hard, didn't you?
Yes. The other thing that happens is, as Montegalia County continues to grow and the business base grows, what your family may get on this chart will reduce because there's more businesses and more people that will be paying into this. When we did the bond in 2004, we told everyone, as an example, you're going to pay $100 a year. As the business base has grown, we set 100 at that time, it's now $50. And every year, the board has to approve all these bonding rates and all this stuff. And people can look at, you paid this much at this time, but now because we've grown so much, it's this much. So that's why I was asking about.
Very good, excellent points. And also, when you refinance the existing bonds into lower debt service, the Municipal Bond Commission just focuses on the levy required.
Bond Commission just focuses on the levy required for that lower debt service. So again, that's another way to lower that levy rate. But on the rating question, excellent question. So there are, there are few ways to to tackle this. One, one is that the school, the state school bond program is basically an intercept or a backstop program where the governor and the legislature essentially promise to to provide funds if there is ever a shortfall in either debt service or a default in payments. And to my knowledge, and Tom Piercy is much more experienced with this than I am, I don't think we've ever had a default on any general obligation bond in the state of West Virginia and as a, since nineteen thirty-one, maybe, or. So as a result of that, the rating agencies love us. They love the state of West Virginia, and they also particularly like the administrative supervision of Municipal Bond Commission. For instance, the ten percent requirement, that allowance, you're building up a surplus collection. And then once, once you hit certain thresholds, like at twenty-five percent and fifty percent of the next fiscal year's debt service, and provided there's a low interest rate environment, and provided the funds that you could utilize as far as surplus go are tied to the original bond order and projects, you can get those surplus funds back or downsize the bond issue with surplus funds. So that's a, that's been a very, a very successful way to to lower the taxpayers' burden as far as levy rates go, because lower debt service means lower levy rates.
I'd also just add with respect to the rating, you know, that the the independent rating that you were talking about, where school boards seek, go through a rating agency process and seek their own independent rating. Not a lot of school boards in the state have that ability, simply because they don't have the financials or, or, you know, the security to to really drive that that rate that's going to improve the overall interest rate. And I think this county, I mean, it'll be subject to the the review that Rob and his team does, but it's probably well positioned and among the few in the state that would, that may have that opportunity. So it's, it's certainly something he's going to take a look at and and work together to determine whether or not that's a good idea. But my sense is that there's, there's probably a pretty good opportunity there to to.
Can you go through your process? Can you go through your process as you're speaking? Because in case you answer some of the questions we might have in the presentation that you're planning on giving.
Absolutely. And so, so do you want me to just go through this, the bond election order now?
What you brought with you?
Absolutely.
Yeah, just in case there's something.
Yeah, unfortunately, for the students that are still here, you know, bond election orders, there's no video walkthrough, it's not as exciting, but it's very important because it's how we're going to pay for the project. And so what I've prepared today is really a sample and a form that this board can use to determine how they want to size this project, what parameters they want to put on it, and how they want to describe this, not only in terms of what's obligated to be described by law, but what the voters will actually see at the ballot box if they eventually vote on this May twenty twenty-four. And so I want to draw your attention to a few pages. First, on page two, section six, this is what contains the not to exceed amount. And so this is the amount that you see on these charts, whether it's a hundred and ten, a hundred and twenty-five. This is going to be the maximum amount that the voters are asked to approve. And so really, what's driving this number is, of course, the cost that the design team is coming up with. And once we have that cost, then that'll allow us to to put in a not to exceed number. Now, there's also a funding mix question that we'll have to address, and that is, is this going to be one hundred percent funded by bond proceeds, or will a portion be funded by SBA grants or other sources like lease purchase obligations? And so that's going to either have a potential impact of of lowering the actual amount that's financed from bond proceeds and ultimately the amount that the taxpayers will have to pay. Down in section seven and eight, you'll see the election, of course, is the primary election. We don't have the ability anymore to have a special election, so that's, that's fairly set in stone. And then section eight, the not to exceed interest rate. So that goes back to Rob's conversation about seven percent. We hope and we expect that that month, that number at the time of closing will be much lower than seven percent. We want to provide as much flexibility as possible because we had a cap that we priced today at four point five percent, and we ended up doing very well, it's at three point nine eight. But there were some times when the the interest rates were were higher in the past few weeks, we were worried we were going to get under that number. And so this provides sufficient cushion, based on Rob's analysis and his team's analysis, to give us a, a number that we hope is significantly lower. But if if it has to be that, then we'll have the ability to issue bonds and complete the project. And then also the term. If you look, if you look at the chart here, you'll see, of course, for a fifteen year term, that the annual levy is higher for a thirty year term. But of course, the taxpayers would be asked for an additional fifteen years to pay that levy. And so i- it's really a balance on what you think the voters will support, what the board supports, and and what the markets really want to see in terms of of determining what the maximum number of years for your term is. And and Rob, of course, is well suited to address questions on that. Really, the the next big issue I wanted to discuss is on page three. This is the project list. A lot of times when we do GO bonds, we'll have seven, eight, ten projects, and we'll try and go all around the school district and and give each area, you know, something that they they would like to have in their community.
General obligation.
Yeah, general obligation bonds means it's supported by levy revenues, right? And so the levy is imposed, the sheriff collects it, it's sent to the Municipal Bond Commission, and then the Municipal Bond Commission pays the bondholders, right? And so as Rob said, that the markets really, really like this type of paper because there's so much security. There's the Municipal Bond Commission backstop, there's the board's ability to step in and cover any shortfall. And the governor, every year since nineteen thirty-one, has had a general appropriation to make sure there's sufficient funds to make these payments. So the result of that is there's never been a default, at least for general obligation debt in West Virginia's history, or at least since nineteen thirty-one. Um, but but this chart here is actually a little different than what we would ordinarily see. And the purpose, the reason for that is because there's a single project here. But the thing that's unique about this project is it's going to serve the entire community, right? It's not just where it's located, the students from anywhere in the county are going to be able to use this facility. And so right now, there's a placeholder in that description that was created by a bond attorney, not by a design team or or folks that have anything to do with with the actual design of the project. So don't feel like you have to be married to this exact language. We want this to accurately describe the the pro, the project, which is required by law, but also this is what the voters will see at the ballot. So it's very important to put in the details, the relevant details that you think are important to voters, because this is what they're ultimately going to be acting on. And then you'll see below that, there's also the funding sources. And there's, there's a little bit of discussion to be had about whether or not the SBA is going to be invoked. If we mention the SBA in the ballot itself, then they have to approve what what that language says. Those conversations are underway. And so if it's the board's desire to include a potential SBA component, then there's the possibility to do that. I would add, it's my understanding that we may not pursue an SBA contingency. And what that means is these bonds aren't going to be contingent on the commitment of funds from the school building authority. Now, of course, we will go after those funds, we'll hope we receive those funds, we'll apply those funds to the project if granted. But we don't, we want to be able to, if approved by the voters, build the project on the board's timeline and not the SBA's, because sometimes those funds can be drawn out over years, and there's, there's already projects in the pipeline, so to speak. And so I know that's a lot to cover, that there's more detail to this, this bond election order, that's really a lot of statutory required and constitutional required provisions. But those are the fundamental issues between now and when the design team has a cost estimate on December twelfth that will need to settle, and then eventually have the board consider a finalized bond election order either late December or early January. So happy to answer any questions on that, but and and really anything else with respect to the issuance of bonds from now to the time of closing?
I just had a comment for these guys. The reason it's important to you is you guys are the ones that are going to have to pay it. I mean, we're sitting up here and doing our thing thirty years ago, you guys will be the ones that have to pay it, but it's, it's on, it's not coming out of your paycheck, it's, it's property owner taxes. So if you don't own any, own any property, then you're in good shape there. But I think it's important, I'm glad that you got to hear this, I know it's probably all glossy over and everything, but as you go through life, you'll start hearing some of this, it'll come back and say, I heard that at a school board meeting. So anyway, I didn't want to scare you off right off, throw off the bat, but it's just the property owners that'll pay it.
I want to ask the students, are you guys here for anything else besides to just kill? You guys can get, well, let's take two seconds, let you guys vacate, because.
You suffer long enough.
Thank you for the apples.
Thanks for the apples.
Okay, because we're going to start asking some questions, and you guys.
Thank you.
Yep, yep. Thank you for talking.
You know how to clear out a room, Mr. Light.
I, I, I saw two of them fall asleep, so I figured.
Yeah, I mean, they, they.
You did it.
They usually leave before I step up to the podium, but that's okay.
Well, we all, we obviously know the biggest challenge here is is trying to, we have to budget this thing with no, no federal funds, no state funds, no SBA funds. We have, we have to work on this as if none of that's coming in. That's the, that's the biggest challenge. We had a conversation about that yesterday. They might give us money, they might not.
That's exactly right. I'd also add, you have the flexibility to receive those funds and apply them to the project and offset the project.
Oh, we're definitely flexible to fund money.
Yeah, that's right.
I mean, and there's other places we could get funds. I mean, for that matter, the legislature this year, with the surplus, the governor was able to just, you know, they appropriated funds to different colleges and different areas and, you know, if this is a, you know, something they want to see in a region, then who knows?
Yeah, and and also based on Mrs. Walker's question about the rating, the credit strength of not only the school board, but the state, that lowers, in in an investor's mind, that lowers the risk. And so when you lower the risk, you lower what you have to pay to them. And so that increases the potential for generating possibly premium bond proceeds above the par, which, or let's, let's say on the, let's say on the hundred twenty-five million project fund, hypothetical, you generated premium, you might, you might only have to issue a hundred twenty-three million. So that's another way. But Tom mentioned other ways and avenues as well, and Mrs. Walker did, as far as other funding sources that that are being looked at.
So anything in this has to be spent within how, how, what's the timeframe?
So, yeah, there's, there's a thing called a temporary period. It's a, it's from the federal treasury regulations, but it it provides a three-year period for public issuers on tax exempt debt to spend down bond proceeds on the project. And so you have a three-year period where there's no arbitrage or rebate issues, and we don't need to get into those issues here, but they are very important. If the, if a project or a series of projects is so complicated that in the engineer's estimate, it would take five years to complete, that three-year period can be extended to five years. But a lot of times when we're thinking about the five-year temporary period, it's because of a succession of projects or roads that that just, there's no way that can be built in three years. And so I'm not suggesting that is or it's not the case here, but for a single project that that may be more difficult to to obtain that five-year period. But that wouldn't be a decision for bond counsel. We'd rely on the design team and engineering team to provide a certification that the IRS requires to extend that temporary period. But yes, the bond proceeds generally are spent in three or five years. Any other questions?
I don't have any. I would like to, I'd like to thank you guys for coming in. So this, the process that we've been working on and, and thank you for your time, thank you, DLR, for your time and and letting the kids beat you up a little bit about the, some things and, um, things that you guys have thought about, but they they obviously didn't see that. So that's, really appreciate you guys coming here also, so.
Absolutely. Very glad to be here, so thanks for having us.
Thank you, guys.
You won't study now, too?
Okay. Just as a reminder to the board and and the general public, we meet weekly with DLR as a leadership team and review all of these design and the process and go through all those types of things. So we meet continually with them, and we meet every other week with our bond counsel and Rob as well, so that we're working constantly on all of this and then bringing that information to you periodically to to keep you up to speed. Certainly, things will heat up here over the course of the next thirty to to forty-five days, so. But again, continuing with with, we're going to turn our attention now to our student outcomes and our academic section of the meeting. And we're going to start with something you're used to seeing periodically, and that's our panorama report. And Michael, as somebody you're routinely used to seeing as well, provide that report. So thank you, Mike.
Yep. Hi, good evening. So I'll go, I'm going over the Fall twenty twenty-three panorama student survey results that we did. So we ran those surveys at the end of September, beginning of October, about six weeks into this school year. As always, we, parents have the right to opt their child out if they do not want them to participate in the surveys. This time, we had our highest participation rate in our student survey since we started in the spring of twenty twenty-one. So we had eighty-four percent of our students and thirty through twelve complete their surveys, which was six percent higher than we ever have. So we were really happy about that. And one hundred percent of the teachers in K through five completed the teacher perception surveys. So we had, we had good participation across the board. So this is the thirty through five well-being, and you can see on the right-hand side, you can see the challenge, the topics, which were challenging feelings, emission regulation, grit, and self-management. And then I did what we ended the last school year and then the current school year, what we started out as. So as you can see, we made nice gains across the board, especially in challenging feelings. We had a five percent gain in that mission regulation and self-management, we went up, and we stayed steady at grit. On the right-hand side, you can see the comparison to others nationally, where we're at in each category. We're in the upper eightieth percentile, and all those grit, we're in the fortieth. That did, when we initially started, we were in the lower twentieth of that. So we made steady gains in that, and we're continually, continuing to look at that. Okay, so the supports, this is where the teacher-student relationships and valuing of school, this is where we saw some nice gains in this area, too. As you can see, a five percent in teacher-student relationship, and then the four percent in the valuing of school, which would put us up in the upper percentile for teacher-student relationships, and then even in the upper percentiles for the valuing of school. So those four and five percent increases were nice to see in grades thirty through five.
I assume I should say current, where it says end?
Yes, I apologize for that. I noticed that I, you'll see on the next slide, I did current, and then it says end. So by that is current, I apologize for that. So in six through twelve, the well-being, same topics. Again, we saw increases in gains across the board in those areas. As you can see, challenging feelings, again, we went up four percent, one percent in emission regulation, one percent in grit, and two percent in self-management. Again, our percentile rank to others nationally, we're in the upper eightieth percentile. Grit, we're still in that lower fortieth percentile for that one.
Have we been able to figure that out?
Grit, I think it's honestly, and I will, I want to say it's the way the question's worded a little bit, too, especially in our younger grades, but it's, it's about goal setting and how how likely are they to stick to a goal if they fail. But some of it is over a long span of three months. So the question asks, and and how likely are you to stick to a goal over a span of three months? Which I think that has a lot to do with it, because even myself, I probably have a hard time with a goal for three months. So we're looking at rewording that question and the, for future surveys, to be more, to be more relevant for what students, you know, goal-setting, you know, weekly, even maximum at a month's time.
Hey, Mike, I just wanted to, are these pre-candid questions from like the national, so you can compare nationally?
Yes.
Do we, we don't set the questions?
We do not set the questions. So panorama has, they've worked with Harvard University, and they came up with the questions that panorama has within their bank of the topic areas and the questions that are asked.
I'm just saying, I mean, if you've got that many smart people involved, how do you have challenging feelings go up, and that's a good thing?
Yeah.
I mean, I know, I'm reading the fine print here, but I'm thinking, it seems like the more challenging it would be. it seems like the more challenging it would be, the worse it would be.
Yeah. So they're, so the challenging feelings, they're, they're, um, so it says like in the past, in the past week, have you felt lonely? Have you felt worried? And students are responding, they're, they're not, they haven't as often. So that's why we're seeing the increases there. So in 6 through 12, the wellbeing, again, you're seeing the jumps in the teacher-student relationships and the valuing of school. And then the 60th, 53rd percentile compared nationally, you know, we're lower in those areas. We've always been in the 6 through 12. But we did see some, some nice gains percentage-wise and hopefully we'll continue to see those, those gains that we've made for 6 through 12. So one of the, one of the things is the open-ended response questions that comes with the challenging feelings. So thinking about everything in your life right now, what feels the hardest for you? And this is a word bank. And you can see those keywords that have popped up and those are the ones that have the sister, brother, mom, family are showing up the most in the responses to kids. I pulled some of the responses that went along with some consistency of what students were, were answering, as you can see on the side there. So one of them is my parents are divorced and switching back and forth to houses. So failing in gymnastics and my coach is pushing me too hard and being rude and favoring all the other girls except me and controlling my emotions, depression, not eating, being stressed out, that I get mad at people who did nothing, like my friends and parents. That our family's having a hard time with bills, so we might get kicked out of our house and also not doing good on food, math and reading. Getting up every day after school, I always have sports instrument, not a day without a break. And when I get home, it's night and it repeats. So this just gives us a little glimpse into the lives of our students. And this is 3 through 5. I'll do 6 through 12 here, but just kind of what's going on in their lives. Yes, they have academics, they have school and, you know, math and reading and academics are hard for kids, too, but they have all these other things that are going on in their lives that are challenging. And just, you know, you think about kids, you know, worrying, you know, a kid worrying a third or fourth or fifth grader worrying about their family being able to pay the bills, that's a stress and having to worry about that every day. You know, and then coming to school and trying to learn, that's, that's a challenge that our kids are facing. So 6 through 12, as you can see, the, the same things are popping up, schoolwork, friends, mom, football, dad, family, parents, and then some of the other things on the side. So balancing extracurricular, personal life and schoolwork, keeping up with all my schoolwork, while juggling softball and social life, then adding in all the things I need to do for college is very stressful. The hardest thing for me right now is that I like to make more friends, but I really, I have bad, really bad social anxiety. So it's, it's hard and I'm bad with communication. The hardest, hardest for me right now is keeping my emotions under control and controlling my mind, keeping my mind at ease. Feeling that being the only one who's going through something. So those are just some of the examples that are 6 through 12. And I, like I said, I try to find consistent answers amongst the students. And a lot of them have the same kind of things that they were going through. And then the teacher perception. So on the right, so what I did this year is I did a comparison between beginning last year, not the end of last year, and the beginning of this year. Because beginning of the year, teachers have only students anyways. So it's, I'd like to see where teachers feel students are coming in at the beginning of the year. At the end of the year, it's different because they've had it for a year and they've kind of kids, they got to know their kids. The kids have gotten to know their teachers, expectations, those type of things. So you can see where we were from end of last year to the beginning of this year on the right with the decreases. But I did a comparison from beginning of last year to this year, which we have gains across the board, except emotion regulation stayed the same. So it's staying steady in that sense. I expect at the end of the year, we will be up where we were at the end of last year because that's the trend that we tend to see as we go throughout the year and hopefully even higher than we, than we've been in the past. And I think that is my, my quick summary of our student surveys. If you have any questions, I will answer any questions.
Are we doing new things or the same thing?
And as far as-
As far as social emotional wellness?
Within the schools?
Yes.
Yeah. So we still do, you know, we still have our same programs. So we have second step, you know, school connect with, you know, second steps in our elementary and middle school, school connects in our high school as far as our SEL programs that we have for students that we do. I think what schools are doing more, they're looking at the data and they're making more informed choices about, you know, where they're, where they may be low. So one school may be, you know, lower in one area, so they may put more of a focus on there. I know grit was a big focus for a while. You know, teacher-student relationship, you know, we kind of saw a decrease at the end of last year. And I know a focus was put on that at the beginning of this year to really get back to that teacher-student relationship. And obviously, we saw some nice gains there. So we still have our base of things that we're doing, but each school was adapting and doing things that meet the needs of their school based off the survey results.
Kind of to piggyback on what Dan was talking about, these being the canned questions, so to speak. Do, or do we have the ability to do coaches-student relationships and kind of the same questions?
We could. So we can always, what's nice about this, too, is we can, we run these surveys. We can always, like any school can run their own surveys that they want at any time during the year. They don't have to be from the bank. If we have our own questions we want to ask, we can put those, you know, out there for a school to do. So if, you know, coaches, coaches, coach-student relationship, if we wanted to look at that, we could do that for whatever schools we wanted to.
The reason I bring that up is I see that on about every one of these. There's a, the one about gymnastics and they don't like me and they, they like this one better. And I've asked this several times, but I'd be curious to know really how our students feel towards the coaches and the sports. Because my whole thing is, are they better off at the end of all of this? Would they say I'm really a better person than I was in the beginning? Or am I deflated and I don't want to do this anymore? Kind of, I would love to see that at some point in time, but I'm, I'm just 20% of the board, so.
Yeah, definitely. We can look at that.
Thank you for your presentation. It's always good to get, you know, a little bit of a look at where we're at and what we're doing as far as.
I will say, for the people tuning in, it's Mike Ryan.
Yeah, hi.
Because there'll be a lot of people streaming and watching this. So I know you come up and we all know you, but I want to make sure everybody else out there knows you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you. You're allowed to leave, too. Next up for us, we're going to hear from Stacy Sylvester. And she's going to talk to us and bring us up to speed on what we're seeing in our special education world. So Stacy, thank you.
Yeah. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for having me. This is my first time getting to speak in front of you all. I know some of you in different capacities, Mr. Kelly. Thank you. So I am passionate about the work that we're doing in special education and for exceptional students. And so I'm going to take us through a little walk of an overview and sort of, you know, where we are, where we're headed and what are the challenges and where do we go from there? So. No, doesn't work. Doesn't work. So what do we look like? So we have approximately 230 special education teachers and providers in Montague County currently. And I include providers because outside from our educators, we have speech-language pathologists, occupational therapists, vision teachers, hearing teachers. They're, they're all within that lump of providers that provide a direct service to children. In addition to that, we have a roughly 143 special education service support staff. That includes autism mentors, aides, preschool special needs supports, all of that gamut. So we have a nice variety of people who are supporting our students. In the table on the left, you can see a breakdown by exceptionality. And over the course of time, I've looked back to July 2022 and our current projections. We were sitting a little over 2,000 students in our district who have individualized education programs or IEPs. And so we offer a continuum of services at each of our schools and currently sitting as we prepare for December child count, we are sitting roughly around the same number. We are seeing a shift in some of the areas opposed to others. So we have seen an influx, I would say, since COVID in the area of children qualifying for speech-language impairments and in the area of developmental delay, which is our preschool students who are entering the school system. We've stayed pretty steady with our children who are identified as having a specific learning disability. That's in the areas of reading, writing, math. That includes children who may have a diagnosis of dyslexia or dyscalculia. Our other health impairment category has held about the same, students with intellectual disabilities as well. And our gifted population, even though they don't qualify as having a disability in West Virginia, they are recognized as being exceptional. And we have a high number of those students and we continue to grow in that area as well, but fluctuate within about 100 each year. Try it again. So what are we going to talk about? We know that special education plays a vital role in supporting students who have diverse learning needs. And how do we go about increasing those outcomes? So our primary goals, thanks, Chris, are these focus areas here. And this is a result of our annual desk audit that we go through in special education every year and essentially get a scorecard in the area of special education. And as a result of the information that came out at the end of last school year, which is all lagged data, it's looking at data from the previous year, so 2021, 2022 school year, you'll see that on here. The areas that are key focus points for us are our graduation and dropout rates, as you can see on this slide. So I've explained that in numbers one and two. And I know that table is small, so I apologize. And I know you could probably increase it on your screen, but this is a, a direct pull from the report card. So indicator one is a measurement indicator and that's looking specifically at graduation of students with disabilities. Our LEA percentage for the 21, 22 school year was roughly 81 and a half percent. And the state target is to be greater than 84. And we are below what the average is at this state right now. Same for dropout. Our dropout rate for students with disabilities is significantly higher than the state in general. So based on that, we pull a team together every year. It's stakeholders, we have parents, we have general education teachers, special education teachers. We have people from curriculum and instruction. We have administrators at all programmatic levels who participate. And together, we analyze data and determine what initiatives do we need to do to improve our outcomes? How do we help our students post-public education? So we are a part of the Guide Post to Graduation Grant that is through the West Virginia Department of Education, Office of Special Programs. And we are focusing on several big things for our students in order to improve graduation and decrease dropout. So some of our initiatives is focusing on after-school tutoring for students with disabilities who are at risk of failing or have failed a course. So we're looking at our students ninth grade and beyond. We have the credit recovery option and we also have STEER meetings, which STEER stands for Students and Teachers Who are Engaged in Education Results. And that, this year, we've brought down to eighth grade. So we've currently finished our first round of STEER meetings at the high schools and the middle school meetings are being scheduled. And this is where we have case managers or the special education teachers who work with the school counselors. They work with the students, they pull them in, they're looking at grades, we're setting goals. What is it that you need so we can make an action plan to help you along the way? So that is moving along there. The next one for us is looking at our proficiency gaps. This is the area that we need to really work hard at and we have been working hard at it. This is looking at our general sumative assessment scores in comparison to students with an IEP and all students. And how are we, how are we closing those gaps every year when we're looking at that end-of-the-year assessment? And so when you look at the data, again, it's lagged data, you see that there's points possible that we can earn in our reporting system if it was met or if we've shown growth. So we have some positives here. In the area of mathematics, we are showing growth. And this is all according to data that we've received thus far. In the area of reading, we, we have some work that needs to continue to occur. So for us, when you look at this, it's flipped. So you'll see that our gaps are larger than the state and the state target. So for example, if you look at grade four ELA, we have a 38% gap compared to the state that's averaging at about a 29% gap and the state target is to be below 29%. So you'll, when you look at those numbers, you'll see where we are in comparison. So what are things that we're currently doing to close the gaps? One of our biggest initiatives that I'll talk about, someone skip around on there, is looking at co-teaching. So we have been fortunate enough to contract with Sonya Kunkel. She is a national co-teach train the trainer. She's a researcher and she's a former administrator. Most of her career has been at the high school level. And she's helped us analyze to look at where are our challenges and where do we have success and what can we do to continue to progress? So we've had a team of about 50 teachers, gen ed and special ed teachers who got to work with her for two days in person. She's done a virtual training with our administrators on how do you look at considering a student as a candidate for co-teach? What do you do when you're in a classroom? What should you be looking for in a walkthrough to determine engagement effectiveness? How are we looking at specially designing our instruction to close those achievement gaps? Keeping students in the grade-level curriculum, getting that exposure and closing the gaps. Because we know if we keep doing what we've been doing, we're going to keep getting what we've always got. And that's not working for us. So we've got to dig deeper. So that's one of our big things. Implementing scientifically-based reading programs is one of our big initiatives. Wilson Reading, I'm sure a lot of you have heard about. We have a wonderful platform there. We have 32 teachers, special education teachers, who have gone through the initial training over the course of two years. We work with Avon Tomlin. She's a retired educator out of our system, a reading expert. She and I meet monthly. We are talking about what is working with our teachers, what is not working, where do we problem solve, analyzing the data regularly. She also provides in-house professional development on our county PD days and is out in the schools between elementary, middle, and we have some high schools who are implementing Wilson Reading at this time. So those are all multisensory approaches to what we can do to close the gaps. And then we have evidence-based practices and strategies that are listed there as well. Our next big ticket item is our preschool child outcomes. And this, again, is lagged data. So we're looking at from the onset of when children enter the school system into pre-K with a specific need and by the time they exit. So some children may come in and only spend a year with us in preschool. Some children may come in at the age of three and get several years there. So what we're seeing is from the time students enter us and then leave in preschool, there hasn't been much growth or achievement in these particular areas. So social, emotional learning, knowledge and skills and appropriate behavior. And so part of our dissegregation of looking at that information last spring was to determine what could be a reason behind that. So one of the things we determined is we have a lot of new staff. We need to train them. And maybe it's just not really understanding what is the child outcome summary report, or in our world, we call it a COSAF. And so helping them go through a training to know what is it that I'm looking for when a child first comes to me? And then what is it we expect them to know when they leave us? So I've worked with the director of early childhood, Debbie Jones, and we've worked within her department. And her people, her academic coaches have gone out and trained our preschool teachers on what it is that we need to be doing. We've also decided that at any eligibility meeting, when we're doing that birth-to-three transition and bringing a child into school for the first time, the team is working together to complete that entry report because that is like your cold read. They haven't stepped foot into the classroom. This is what we know. Where are we going to see them when they leave? Where are we going to see them when they leave? And then the biggest thing there is by the time it gets to the point where we're exiting and moving on to kindergarten, taking the time to go back and review previous year data. If a child entered and maybe they were a level one in the social, emotional, where have they gained or moved to? If we're still level one, we needed to do more work here. But hopefully we've maybe reached a level five and we're showing that growth and achievement. And then the last big ticket item as far as areas that we need to focus on, and I'm pleased to report I have good news on this one, our exit surveys and post-school outcomes. And this is an area, I believe, that there was a ball dropped with the previous year data. This is looking at indicators 14, response rate, which is your exit survey. So anytime a student with a disability is about to exit us, graduate, leave the school system, we complete a survey with their case manager. It's a federal requirement. Where have they come? What do they plan to do? How do they feel about their schooling experience? It's a survey that's online. A case manager can sit with the student, complete it, they respond to it. The following year, they do a one-year follow-up. Where are our students with disabilities? Are they in the workforce? Are they continuing education? Are they in some form of training? And so the data that's reflected there, as you can see, our response rate for the 21-22 school year was only at 14.95%. So we only met with 14% of our students with a disability. And the state target is at least 60. In order to get your post-school outcomes to count towards your reporting, you had to have at least 50% of your students participate in the exit survey. So it's obviously a reflection of a challenge that we did not meet. So we did have 81% of our students followed up on. So we surpassed what the state target was, but we didn't meet that outcome because we didn't get enough participation in the exit survey. So the good news. Immediately when I got that report last year, knowing what had happened previously, I pulled in my team of people. We went school by school, student by student, teacher by teacher. And when the window opened, we allowed time for the special education teachers before school year ended to complete every exit survey on every special education student. And so I'm feeling very good that when we get this report and it's on the state website, we're going to be filled in nice and blue and with a gold star because we've worked hard to close this one out. The next piece is ongoing professional development. So I've tied that in a little bit with what I've shared. And this is something that we put together and has been brought out every principal meeting. We talk about it. I talk about it with my team. So we have our Wilson Reading Initiative, which I've explained that you can see the projected plan and our timeline of implementation. So everything is ongoing. You can see the detailed description there of our work with Sonya Kunkel. She is coming back in in February for an in-person meeting with our co-teaching teams. And then in March, she'll be in-house and out in the schools, seeing about the implementation process of what we've put in place. The last piece there is looking at the unique learning system, and that's for our 1% population. Those are, those are our students and teachers who work with the children who are on an alternative pathway to graduation. This program here provides a rich curriculum in all the core content areas. There's benchmarking included, there's preparation for when they take the alternative assessment at the end of the year. We work closely with the company. They come in and provide PD for our teachers. And then we have a little core group and they continue to meet on our professional learning days as well. So what are our strategies for improving these outcomes? And I've shared those along the way, but we know that evidence-based instruction is one way to make sure that we're doing that. We know that in area number two, those personalized education plans are in our world, we call them PEP plans, starting at age 14. So when we hit that eighth grade year, we really need to be looking at what are we doing to set goals with kids and meet those outcomes as they progress through high school? And then data drives everything we do. So we're meeting in PLCs, special education teachers are collecting progress on IEP goals bi-weekly and talking about what is it that's working, we need to keep doing, and what's not, we need to change course. So we're meeting regularly out in the schools. My teams are, my team of people is meeting in PLCs with the special education teachers in the buildings. They're working closely with their administration and the teachers to determine next steps. So what are our current challenges? We know that navigating complexities, complexities in special education is a challenge. And these are three big areas, not only for us in Montague County Schools or the state of West Virginia, but these are things globally that if you're following that out in the arena, are real challenges. And the number one would be our staffing issue. We know that insufficient staffing of teachers and support staff can hinder and affect our programming and outcomes. A collaborative approach is something that needs to be fostered and worked on all the time. So continuing to establish effective partnerships with educators, families, support staff is crucial, not only for our academic success, but behaviorally and socially. And then student behaviors. Recognizing the diverse needs of our students and understanding that all behavior is a form of communication. And really establishing supports for our littlest students as they enter our system for the next 13 years. And what can we do to foster that early intervention and have positive outcomes? So with those challenges, where do we go? So all of this is things that are in the works and, and things for us to continue to work on. So we are working all the time to maintain and recruit qualified staff. We have a lot of things in play for extensive training and supports in the areas of behavior. We're getting ready to do a big training with our preschool teachers, looking at some supports and looking at ways to de-escalate challenging behaviors. And then knowing that our littlest population of students are coming in with things that we really need to focus on. Working to process and, and look at establishing a possible three-year-old center to consolidate our resources, looking at them entering our school system for the first time so we can really hone in and provide those, those supports at the onset. So in summary, we've got diverse learners. We need to have a collaborative approach and it's always about continuous improvement. So that's special education in a nutshell right now currently. I know that's a lot of deep information, so I'm here if you have any questions. I just want to thank you for your continual support in what we do. Yes, ma'am.
So my question is, as we're providing the least restrictive environments, I know that occasionally students are in classrooms with not as many exceptional students and that we have staff that that is not their specialty. So what has been, what are your plans to support those staff members that are uncomfortable and not really sure how they're supposed to include those students or just work with all that?
Yeah, yeah. So you're referencing a general education teacher, maybe someone who's got a specialty area in a content or a grade level. So it's always about continuous improvement. So if an individual is feeling like, I'm just not sure how to handle this situation or, or an approach to this, it's all about training. How do we educate each other, support to provide what that individual student needs? So it may be that somebody reaches out to me or someone in my department, and I'm happy to have those conversations and support those, those areas. It may just be minor tweaks to the time of day or do we need breaks? What are we using supplementary services to help support a child? Is it a matter of visual supports? Lots of variables could take place there, but anytime someone needs support, we are going to make sure that that support is provided to help them better their practice and understand the diverse needs of students with disabilities.
I just think we have a lot of teachers in the system. Well, I can just go back to when my children were in school. And there were, was a large group of students who needed the, in their IEP was least restrictive environment, but it was difficult for them to sit in the regular education classroom with the other students and participate because it was just overwhelming. And, and you know, we have a lot of teachers that when they got their certificates, they didn't take any special educate, they didn't offer special education classes. And I think a lot of the staff, I didn't know if you were going to be doing professional development with our regular ed teachers that are working with the least restrictive, you know, what your plans were for some of our professional development days for our regular ed, if you will, teachers.
Yeah, no, I think anytime that there's a training that's needed, that is absolutely appropriate, we can do that. I think the more we can educate everyone on diverse needs, especially today, we have more diverse needs. We're constantly learning about children and their unique needs. Everything that kind of drives the least restrictive environment that you're referencing is through the IEP team. So in an IEP team, you have a special education teacher, a general education teacher, and that's where those decisions get made and how do we best support? And so helping those who maybe aren't in that arena of diverse understanding of whatever the exceptionality may be is an important role. It's important to work with the building level administrator on those needs. If, if we're not sure what those areas are, then bringing in other individuals to help say, how can I help you? Tell me what the challenge is. Let's work through this together. Here are some suggestions. Trying the suggestions. If we're not sure about those, we, we just constantly have to be problem solving. So if the recommendation is that we look at additional trainings for our general education teachers, I think it's, it's feasible and should be happening.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good job.
Thank you, Mr. Lidle.
This is the biggest challenge in education. This is what's burning our teachers out. Because they're responsible for so much, such a variety of kids and they just absolutely, it's too much for them. It's really just too much. And it's going to be one of the things in education that's going to have to change eventually that, that we got to figure this out. This is our, this is our one, this is why I had this put up here. This is our challenge in this school system. So we don't want to be talking two years from now about the same challenges. We want it fixed.
I agree. And I think slow and steady helps get us there. Like I know everybody wants a quick fix, right? Like we want to like, how do we get those outcomes? But I think if we put in the work with the research-based programs that are going to support that, then we will see those outcomes come to fruition.
What's the true, what is the true answer to this problem?
I don't know that I can answer that one, sir.
Well, you're our specialist and that's what I'm going to ask the same question a year from now and then they'll say, hopefully if I'm still here, and the same question a year after that. What are we doing to find, find the thing? It's, it's our bus drivers. They're dealing with kids that just don't have the guidance from home, the care from home, the, you know. We got kids that come to school that have no idea anything about their parents just have not done anything with them for three years.
Right.
And they put them on our teachers.
Yeah, so those are some of those precipitating factors that we really don't have control over. Those are things outside of the school system coming in. But what do we do when they are here to help support them and foster them? Early intervention is always key. And I think the fact that we're seeing growing numbers, not only in probably just general preschool enrollment, but enrollment with children with disabilities, I think there's a lot of things out in the world that are impacting, you know, what we're seeing here. But those are things that, you know, we can't control. But what we can control is how we address, how we problem solve, how we engage students, how we present information to them, what resources are we using to give them access to their education? You know, we live in a world full of technology. I'm learning things every day about different ways we can help children access their curriculum and still have the quality of the standards that were driven to, to guide us.
You said something earlier I wanted to ask. When you ask someone, because you said, you know, what, when you ask the student, what do you need? And like Mike Ryan just got done with this big, you know, the big presentation and it had the, all the words that were the most common words. What, what would you say would be the most common words? What do these students need? What can we provide as a board? What can we provide as a system? What would they ask for? Do we know the answer to that question?
I think it's a great question and I think it would vary from programmatic level to programmatic level from...
Well, that's exactly what Mike did. He had three, third, two, fifth, and then six, two, 12. So let's start identifying that stuff. Is the six through 12 BDs looking at technology education, something to distract them, something to get them hands-on, so they just can't sit in a seat? If a kid can't sit in a seat, why are you forcing the teacher to? Why are we forcing, as a school system, forcing a teacher to try to get that kid to sit in that class? And what's that doing to the other 19 kids in that class? What's that doing to the social, emotional well-being of that teacher? And these are questions that we need to hit this head on. And that's why we're here. That's why you're here. We need to know what you need so we can support you.
Yeah, so I think part of it is, you know, the, the pipeline to give us educators. So we don't have in our backyard anymore programs that are necessarily bringing people to the table. So our recruitment has to expand. I think we have to really find, when we say qualify, people who are interested in doing this work. You know, if, if you enjoy challenging behaviors, we want to foster that. We want to take you to where you are. That's why we have people who are experts in that area to help us troubleshoot those things. You know, I think...
So do we need to start a conversation with the university at this point? Is that what we're saying? West Virginia University to step up and start providing these programs again like they were?
I mean, I think we need to work with our higher ed programs to figure out ways to help get us people in this area.
I will craft that email tomorrow.
Well, so you're saying even a broader, a broader discussion with Higher Education Policy Commission? Because it's not just, I mean, we'd like to think it's just WVU, but quite honestly...
That's our backyard.
Yeah, but they, well, we also have Fairmont. It's down in Glendale.
Fairmont's out our back door.
Not that far away. I mean, there's a lot of possibilities because unfortunately, these programs take a while to build and you have to recruit. And I mean, it's, it's not an overnight...
And it, I know it doesn't help us in Montague County, but it's not just something unique to us or unique to West Virginia. This is something, if, if you're reading articles or following it nationwide or globally even, there is a shortage in our field, just like there's shortages out in the business world. You know, I don't know how they handle those things. That's hard when we still have kids coming to school every day, right? So, and knowing that we're charged with educating everyone. Part of what we do is we are responsible for educating everyone. And so that, that's what we're charged with doing. So I, I will take notes, Mr. Lidle.
I will ask, I will ask the superintendent to start putting this stuff together. And, and I mean, as you ask for stuff, because we're not going to actually come back every month, but we're going to have to start, if this is our biggest challenge in Mon County Schools, we're going to have to start hearing about it a little bit more often and start working on it.
I think it's, it's definitely something that is impacting us being able to move beyond some of our challenges, for sure. I think what we're doing in the areas of behavior, we, we all recognize that that's a challenge. You know, is we could probably peel those onion layers back immensely and still not even get to the full root cause, knowing that there's always going to be things that are out of our control. What we can control is when the children are in our classrooms with the interventions and programs that we're, we're using to help them and to help support our teachers, just as Mrs. Walker mentioned, you know, what about the general education teachers who maybe haven't gone to school to get this additional endorsement to work with students with disabilities? So us constantly keeping that on the front burner to look at, to problem solve, to improve is when we work to get those positive outcomes.
100% agree that you can only do what you're, what you can do when they're in the classroom. But us as a board and us as a system and us as politicians, we can push for other things to happen. That's what my question is. If that's the challenge, that's what we're going to start working on. Because it's not, it's not an acceptable thing to have, there's, if there's a failing part of our school system, we need to hit it head on.
Yeah, and, and I don't know, because it's been some time since I've sat in a seat in a college class. But it, it might be interesting to know, you know, what are they telling them about what public education looks like today? I, I don't know that answer. I think it's worth us maybe working on to find out, you know, what are we presenting? What are we talking about? You know, how do we help prepare that teacher who's graduating in May, who wants to come and be an educator? Because that's what they've dreamed of since they were first, in first grade, because they fell in love with. Um, you know, how do we help prepare that teacher who's graduating in May, who wants to come and be an educator? Because that's what they've dreamed of since they were first, in first grade, because they fell in love with it. How do we help them want to stay with us and, and feel supported and, and make a difference?
I think you're going to be, your biggest problem is societal changes. Three years from now, you'll be looking at something else that's come down and you have to deal with. And I think a lot of the teachers, years ago, teachers used to get this special ed because they knew they could get into a system. You know, that, that's like, there, there's always been a need. So they think, well, I'll get this, at least I'll get my foot in the door and then maybe go on to, to something else. I don't see that so much now. It's, I think the stress level, the le, I mean, one screw up, if you call, you've lost your career. So I think there's, there's a whole lot of things that go into that, why or why not? Um, but again, that, and when they're sending them out, as you know, we have a teacher in the family, it's, I don't know that they're that prepared when they hit the door, they get their diplomas, there you are. And then the first three years they're in our system going, wow. You know, so I, I don't envy your job trying to figure out, once you get it figured out today, three years from now you'll say, well, we got to add this to it. So I agree that, you know, we need to stay focused on and hit it head on, but I don't think it's a one-shot fits all and it's like this thing's going to change too much.
And things are changing at a faster pace than they ever have before in our world, so.
It's crazy.
Yeah, and, and your unique challenge is, it carries the weight of federal law. I mean, that's three layers ahead of us.
That's the point I was making.
There's IEPs. What's an IEP? What's an average IEP now? About fourteen pages?
Oh, that, that's not really a, an answer that I could probably give you because everything is so individualized. But Mr. Berry, you make a, a key point. Everything is under the Office of Civil Rights. Everything that we are doing in my world falls under that umbrella and just making sure that, you know, we're providing the necessary things that are determined in those meetings to educationally support children with disabilities. So, um, you know, a, a page is a hard, hard one for me to give you an exact, I mean, it could be anywhere from ten pages to whatever the individual needs. It ca, it could be lengthy.
Right, right. And as opposed to maybe ten years ago, would you say that IEPs probably have doubled in size?
I, I don't know what you mean. Like you mean what's within the meat of the document?
Ten years ago, they were, the average was five pages, now it's ten pages.
Well, it's, it's about certain areas within the, the requirements that are required from IDEA within the document. So there are certain areas that have to be covered. The document grows with the information that's added to each of those sections, if that makes sense.
Yeah, and lawsuits.
So most of the, the meat of what you're talking about is in the present levels of performance. That's where the conversation surrounds around current progress, strengths, challenges of individuals. You know, what are, what are they progressing in that's working really well that we can look at adjusting? Because those current needs are different than they were if we met on the student three years and sixty-four days ago. Um, so it, it's about the components that are within the document. Those haven't necessarily changed since IDEA was reauthorized in two thousand and four, which has been a long time ago. A lot has changed in almost twenty years.
Well, yeah, like the point I wanted to make was, I mean, this is federal law. We, we cannot, and these IEPs carry the weight of federal law. We, our hands are really tied on that. And I commend you for the job that you do.
Thank you.
And, and for this, for regular educators, I know of some regular, regular educators who service forty, as many as forty, I think that's the record I've heard, I, IEP students out of a hundred and sixty kids that they may have.
One part that I saw in your presentation, we had two kids that, brain injuries? I mean, how do you tell a teacher, now you're going to go, I mean, just well continue on the med school and, I mean, the stuff that you read down through there that they have to deal with, it looks like something that would be dealt with in a doctor's office. So I, I agree with Dan, I commend you for working your way through all this because I don't know how you do it.
It's been a busy first year, but I'm here for the good fight.
Please let us know how we can support you.
Thank you.
And that's, I'm telling you, from, from the, from the state level, now that you said, Dan brings up the point about the federal level, there's money there too. There has to be some, there has to be an answer here. There has to be an answer to get this weight off our teachers' backs as, as heavy as it is right now.
Well, thank you for having me and, um, let me know if there's anything else that I can provide. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Stacy.
You're welcome.
How can we tell Tony to be short?
Uh, Tony will be very concise.
I mean, we're moving on to the next.
We are, we are going to get a transportation update for the board. This was something you requested.
Yes.
So Tony's here to, to do that and, and, uh, I'm, I'm sure, again, he, he probably might have to drive tomorrow morning as things are going, so I got to get him out of here from a legal standpoint. So he can drive if we need him. All right, so thanks, Tony.
So as you know, we started the year out with a whole, pretty well, a whole new transportation schedules and everything. Uh, and I told Dr. Campbell, the board members, give me a month from the first day of school that we would, it'd take us a month to get them ironed out. And they did. We was right at that month mark. Uh, the hiccups that we knew were going to be there, we had them ironed out and running smoothly. Um, the number of changes that we needed to make, um, was a lot lower than, uh, I was anticipating, which made me very happy to see. Um, the bus num, the attendance on the buses, we are averaging, I would say eighty-five, probably about eighty-five percent capacity on the buses. Um, that's where I wanted to be because that allows for growth in them areas that the buses are running. Um, plus, just so you got the comfortability for the kids, you're not overcrowding yet. Bus might be a seventy-seven passenger bus, but you're not going to be comfortable in there with seventy-seven kids on there. So that gives us that ability. Um, things that I've seen parents, uh, had to get used to with it and they've, uh, done a good job of, uh, adapting. Years past, they were used to, well, if my, their child didn't get up in time, they could call the bus garage and say, hey, um, my child didn't, uh, catch the bus, uh, they're going to catch the next one coming through because there was so much leapfrogging. We don't have that now. So, um, the parents and the, the students have done well adapting to know, and I need to be out there at the bus when that bus is coming through. Um, the change, the things we deal with now is what we deal with every year. Um, new students coming into an area, making sure we got them on the bus, um, and things like that. Biggest challenge we deal with is in our special needs busing, um, living in one area and needing to get them to another, the other side of the town for the school, for their programs that they need. But we're doing well there. Our McKinnon Vento students, um, busing has increased tremendously. Usually we don't see a big influx in that until after the Christmas break. We're already seeing that, um, but we're, we're doing good at covering those areas. So with the new schedules, I'm very, very pleased with where we're at and how quickly adapted. Um, there was a lot of concerns, uh, in my staff, um, that it wasn't going to work because they were so used to it. Um, within a couple of weeks, they were like, this is nice, we like this. Because they're seeing the same kids morning and afternoon. Um, as I told you back in the spring, that's, to me, that's very important. That's what I was used to, um, because it, you developed that rapport with that student, with that parent, and that eliminates, or I won't say eliminates, it lowers disciplinary issues that you will have. Instead of two or three different drivers having that kid in a day, it's the same driver. And we've seen that a lot. So it's going good. Um, in years past, we had trouble getting our buses to the elementary schools, uh, in time for the dismissal. Unless we're dealing with a, uh, accident that's got our road shut down or construction that we've been dealing with, we're getting our buses there before the bell rings to be able to get them loaded and get them out of there in a timely manner. So, um, the changes have been very, um, beneficial for the county, for the students and the parents. Um, moving forward, we're already looking at changes. Um, I don't see no major changes. I'm going to be looking at schedules for the next upcoming year. We'll do the little tweaks that we do every school year. Um, so we're happy with that. Other thing going on in transportation, um, as everyone is aware, we're, uh, just about ready to receive the, uh, first electric school bus in the county. It's actually the first one that's going to be coming off the, uh, assembly line in Charleston and everything. It's going to be delivered here on December fourteenth. Um, and then we'll have another one that's going to be delivered in probably about the middle of January. The one on December fourteenth is part of the, uh, purchases that, uh, the state of West Virginia did with Green Power and everything. So we're looking forward to that. The other things we're dealing with, staffing, um, just, uh, like every other county in the state, the nation, uh, trying to find bus drivers or people want, who want to be bus drivers. Um, we just started a class tonight. Um, I'm interested how many showed up. I had ten applicants. I knew five for sure was coming in. I'm hoping, uh, when I talked to the trainer, all ten of them showed up, um, because that, that is a s, area that we need to address, an answer to it. We don't know what the answer is. I've talked to colleagues throughout the country that's dealing with it. They don't know the answer and their hands are not as tied as what we are here in our state when it comes to salaries and everything. The school districts there have more leeway on what they're going to pay and they're still even having trouble getting, uh, people to come and do the job. Um, rather than that, pretty much it's, uh, just our daily, daily going on, um, dealing with the bus breakdowns, repairs and, uh, some supply chain stuff.
Any, any board member?
Yes, ma'am.
Of course. I have a question. Do we have to add any new drivers or buses? Because I know you were hoping not to have to do that, but of course, we heard from people who thought that was going to have to happen. I also want to know, um, the middle school change, of course, was the biggest. So do you feel that that has kind of leveled out?
Yes, ma'am.
As far as that goes? Okay.
Um, as for the, um, adding buses for our regular routes and stuff, no. We don't need no, no additional routes or anything. We're, um, we had some buses that were overcrowded at the beginning, but we were able to make changes to the routes of the buses that we have and we've taken care of those situations. Um, so we're good there. Any, the only place that we might have to look at, um, adding routes, uh, Mrs. Talarica and I had this talk previously, um, and stuff, would be the McKinnon Vento. Um, that, if we have to add, that's going to be where we're going to have to look at it because the number of students that we're transporting there, where they live, where we need to get to them, it's getting to be such a vast area. It's becoming harder to cover that with three buses. And we're getting, starting to get, see some ex, extended time on bus for some of them students. So that's the only place I can see in the near future that we might have to talk about, uh, seeing about adding another bus. But from a regular bus standpoint, no. Uh, I feel comfortable where we're at, at that point. Um, the middle school schedules changing at, the concerns, um, from my side, when I'm seeing phone calls we've gotten, it's working very well. Um, I've not had no major complaints. I don't think Dr. Campbell or Mrs. Talarica's really gotten many on one of them. It, it was a pretty smooth, uh, transition with that, them timelines also.
I mean, the first couple of weeks, I think probably, we all got calls, for everybody.
Yeah, and we, and I think we all kind of anticipated the first couple of weeks because I, everyone's told me it's been twenty years since something like this had been done. Um, I dealt with a little bit of a change in Preston, but not even to this extent. I mean, this was a major overhaul of our transportation department. So we knew there was going to be, uh, the, uh, calls and everything them first couple of weeks. And I think, uh, conversation I had with Dr. Campbell about the three weeks in, the, the calls were, uh, starting to slow down at that point and stuff. So it, it fell in line with that one month, uh, break-in period for it.
So if any parent now contacts any of us with the overcrowded bus, we just need to get the number and give it to you?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yeah, because we had one, we had one about a week ago that called in, uh, was complaining about that and brought the driver in, pulled the hard drive from the bus. We reviewed it. The, uh, issue that was brought to our attention was because the child was refusing to sit in the ch, the seat. There was actually empty seats.
Oh.
So we, and then we dealt with that appropriately through disciplinary actions and stuff with the schools and talked to them about the safety and all that. But yeah, the last one we've had, it was not a fact, a matter of being overcrowded. It was just the child was not wanting to sit where he needed to sit, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tony.
You're very welcome.
Thank you, Tony.
I thought, I thought we were, I thought I said. I thought, I thought you guys knew that they was not overcrowding on that bus.
Beginning of the year, I got a lot of contact about overcrowding. And I knew we tried to change it. Not that particular child.
Good, sorry. Go ahead, Superintendent.
Okay, um, Amanda's going to give us an update. We don't need to take action on this tonight. That we're, uh, I asked her to update the board on, um, a communications pole relocation, but, um, there, there's no action needed on this. I just wanted her to make sure you guys were up to date on this.
Uh, yeah, over at, uh, Skyview Elementary for the new development that will be taking place, um, uh, Frontier contacted us, uh, needing to relocate or actually remove and add a new communications pole. Uh, it currently, there's one existing and it's in the road right away. And so they want to relocate that. I met them, uh, at the school and it's, you know, it, it is on our property, but you know, it's, it's not close to the parking lot or, or the school or anything. They just need to, uh, you know, put a new one in for us.
Thank you.
All right, and then, um, next, Amanda's going to stay up there, uh, to talk to us about a request, uh, from Tetra Tech Drilling, uh, at Brookhaven.
Yes. Um, they, um, the, working with DEP to do some drilling, uh, at, uh, Brookhaven. And I'm actually going to ask Mike if he can come up and sort of explain just a little bit about it, if you don't mind.
Thank you for hanging in there with us for so long.
No, hey, thank, thank you. What I'm about to discuss seems so insignificant compared to what I've just been hearing. I mean, you all deserve a lot of credit and I commend you for the way that you were not only, uh, allowing the students to stay here, but actually directing and, directing questions and allowing them to add, that's, that's amazing. Thank you. So yeah, what, I don't even want to talk about this now. But, but anyway, yeah, I'm Mike Sheehan, I'm with Tetra Tech Engineering. This is a coworker of mine, Darryl Audia. He is our, uh, realty agent. Uh, and as Amanda said, we have, well, I'd say we have been contracted by the DEP, but the contract isn't even in place yet. So we're kind of here, uh, without a contract. But anyway, uh, that's near, here, nor there. Um, if I can just quickly give you a reason why we're doing this. The DEP has a, a treatment facility that's currently being constructed down on Route Seven near Deloslo, south of, or west of Deloslo. I'm sure a lot of you have seen it, big silo standing there. They're, they're, uh, developing the treatment facility to treat the mine drainage coming out of the Richard Mine. Three hundred gallons per minute average, highly acidic water coming out. And basically what that's going to do, it's going to restore the lower five miles of, of Deckers Creek and reestablish biological connectivity throughout the entire watershed. So that is very exciting. Um, so with that being said, again, we've been contracted to, uh, to drill some holes. And I apologize for not having a, a PowerPoint presentation, but I did put, put up some, uh, areas that we were looking at, uh, up in Brookhaven. And what we've got to do is we've got to drill, uh, down into the mine. And the purpose of doing this is to give the DEP's contractor on site more or less a target. They've made two attempts to get into the mine, horizontal directional drilling, which is expensive. They've made two attempts and they were both unsuccessful. So typically this dri, drilling that we are going to do should have been done prior to that, but due to time constraints and timeframes, that, that they were unable to do it for whatever reasons. So now we're doing it after the fact. And what we've got to do is drill down just to identify the coal seam and water elevations. And then by doing that, we'll also have to survey, uh, we'll survey the existing horizontal drills that they've put in, we'll survey the vertical holes that we're going to put in, and then they'll tie it together and they'll be able to adjust their bearings to more accurately hit the mine voids. Okay? The reason they're, they're drilling into the mine is after they, uh, treat the sl, treat the mine drainage, it generates a lot of sludge. And they're doing the horizontal directional bores to dispose of sludge inside the mine instead of allowing it to go down the creek. So, anyway, yeah, after, what we're looking to do is two holes, which has changed with another reason I don't have a PowerPoint, things have been changing so much. We're going to do two holes. Originally, what we were looking to do was three holes in two different locations. Okay? And that was, the purpose of that was to try to find a mine void. So, rather with the mine maps that we're dealing with, we're talking prelong mines, back in the 1940s, you know, the accuracy is just not there. So, doing vertical holes is cheaper and we would, it's more, it's still a Pocahontas, to be honest, it's still a Pocahontas. But they decided not to go that route to cut cost and to cut the amount of disturbance. They're only now looking to go down and hit the mine, the coal mine floor at two locations. All right? You have the dip of a mine somewhat like this. The one hit the coal elevation up here, the coal elevation down here, so they get a good cross sectional view of what they have to aim at. Okay? So, that's the purpose of doing the vertical holes. So, after, these are going to be temporary. And once we get these holes drilled, they get their holes drilled, these holes will be, they'll be filled in, will come back in with a concrete bentonite grout, fill it from, first you have to put a grout bag down in the bottom of the hole, up above the mine voids. Then you fill the entire thing up with a concrete bentonite grout mixture and it swells up and we can cut the pipe off. There's nothing going to be sticking up. We'll reseed, grade, and that'll be basically it.
Are you talking a typical core three, four inch?
Four, yeah, I'm sorry, four inch diameter hole. Yes, yes. And it'll be a, I'm sorry?
I said it's not a hole that somebody can fall into.
Oh, no, no, no. This will be with an air rotary method, but yeah, it'll be, it'll be small. And again, it's only going to be temporary. It's not going to be a monitoring well, it'll be left in there indefinitely. So, as soon as they're successful with their attempts, these will be reclaimed.
So, which two sites? Because we've got three pages on our little thing.
Yeah, good question. I'm glad you asked. Right now, we're trying to weigh out all of our options. All right? So, we're looking at a number of different parcels so that we can evaluate both what's underneath them and have somewhat of a more comfortable feeling of hitting the void. Not necessarily, we're trying to, but, so yeah, we're looking at three parcels here. If you can advance the slides, is that what this does? Okay. Yeah, these three parcels, the one, it's 11089, I believe, is the gravel parking lot. That one's looking favorable because if you look down where they did their horizontal drilling, one is going towards that gravel parking lot and the other is going over just a little bit, what is that, southwest of your large parcel there. So, we're also looking at a lot across the street from your old school. And we're trying to get ahead of the game. Again, we don't have the contract in place, but we're trying to stay ahead of the game so that when we do get ready, we can move in and we got to get signatures. And yeah, we're just trying to be prepared so that when we do have the signatures and we do do our evaluation to identify which site will best suit our needs or DEP's needs, we're ready to move in and start drilling. And just one thing, the drilling rig, I do have a picture over here. The drilling rig, it's not something huge. It's about the size of a pickup truck.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's about the size of a, so basically, this will be on site accompanied by an air compressor.
So, you do want to drill, you will, may end up drilling on the large site where the school is or not?
We would prefer to stay out of the playground areas.
I think we all would prefer.
Amanda has relayed that to us. We would prefer to stay out, but again, we have to get signatures on these parcels if, just be prepared. Right now, I can't commit that we're going to be drilling anywhere, so I hope you don't think we're up here wasting your time. But again, we're just trying to be prepared for whenever we can move a drilling rig in and start making some holes.
You're not talking a lot of time on the drilling it.
No, no. Roughly, we're looking at drilling down between 120 and 150 feet.
I mean.
And then the first section of it, the first 20, 25 feet through the unconsolidated material down to solid rock, that first section will be cased with PVC pipe. And then after, if they can't extract the pipe after we're done, they'll dig down around it, cut it off, and then again, it'll be filled with grout and then we'll put some soil over top of it, seed it and mulch it, unless it's the gravel parking lot, of course.
Well, I mean, for their, I know where you're talking about because I have underground storage tanks, I've been through this monitoring wells and all that kind of stuff. So, I guess what I'm saying, in our case, it's a day's worth of drilling, so yours is probably not much more than that.
Right, right. We had this same drilling rig across the road, across Route 7. They were there, again, it was the Pocahontas. They were supposed to do three holes to actually find a void. Luckily, they hit a void on the first try. They were out of there within a day.
Yeah, that's what I said, it didn't take long to do it.
And it would be done outside school hours?
Yeah, she did relay that to us. And right now, with the holidays coming up, we're trying to keep the DEP on schedule with this, but there's just been so many challenges in getting the contract in place, in fact, with us. But yeah, hunting season's coming up. It's a lot, all these unique challenges for this, but.
Any questions?
Okay, then I actually should have got a motion for you at this discussion, but that was presentation, so. I'll go ahead and make a recommendation that the board approve the Tetra Tech drilling request.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Are we approving them to, because we don't know exactly where we're going to drill?
We're approving their request to drill where they need to drill. Once the, once they've arranged that.
So, we're giving them anywhere on those parcels?
On whatever's in the right of entry, yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure we're clear on.
Yeah, we'll work with you all. We're not going to just show up with a drilling rig and start punching holes. But I did have, Darryl did accompany me on this in case he did make a decision tonight that he could, he is a notary, he could, we have to have these notarized as a DEP requirement. We're here on behalf of DEP, so it would have to be notarized, but. Yeah.
The only thing I would, I would like to have, I don't know if it's in there or not, but a time limit on.
Yeah, I put a time limit in there to protect, so you, because I knew that question was going to come up. I've done this for like 30 years.
Yeah, that's why I'm big on time limits.
Two years, okay, yeah.
Two-year time limit, that's all I got.
Again, that was included in some of the other exploratory entries. These are going to be temporary. Once they're successful at hitting their targets, they'll be reclaimed. But he did want to put those in there correctly for pretty everyone's interest.
Had that happen, they'd come back 25 years later, "Oh, we're going to drill."
All right. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed the same?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you all very much.
We'll get it to you.
Yeah, I'll just stay here.
Well, they'll get it to you.
Oh. I'm a notary, it's fine.
You're okay. We'll get it later.
I was just trying to expedite. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll mount to you. We'll get it. It'll be, it's official. We, I signed it already.
Oh, really?
I just signed it as soon as you guys, we approved it, but I'm not going to give it to you. I'm going to.
No, you don't have to give it to me, but I can come whenever you tell me. I can notarize it because I saw you sign it.
Okay, do they have your contact? You have their contact?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. No, you're good.
Let me give you my card too.
Thank you.
And just call me and I'll make sure we.
Well, yeah, these guys, I got two notaries sitting right here. I got more notaries than I know what to do with.
Okay, thank you. Have a good day. And I want to say something. I was very impressed, not just to flatter you and the students, but you guys are very professional. I'm not just flattering you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Superintendent, new contracts.
Okay, let's tackle some new contracts. First up is with Thomas C. Murray. Superintendent recommends that the board approve the contract as presented in your executive content.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of the Thomas C. Murray contract as presented, signified by aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed the same?
All right, next up is an underwriting placement agent agreement. And superintendent recommends that the board approve the agreement as presented in your executive content, which includes the contract and the appropriate vendor forms.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
What is this for? Underwriting of what?
This is actually for the other sources that we're looking at for the bonds. So, we are potentially aiming to do a lease purchase for HVAC, for equipment. And then this would be with Eddie McClany, and he has also sold leases for us in the past with our QZAPS.
And we're going to ask him to possibly come in at either the next board meeting. We hope he'll be able to make that if, should you agree to this, to explain what his role would be moving forward.
Any other questions? All in favor of the underwriting placement agreement, agency agreement contract and vendor form with. McClany and the company, signified by aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed the same? Thank you, superintendent.
Right, and our last contract to look at this evening is with the West Virginia Botanic Garden. Superintendent recommends that the board approve the contract as presented in your executive file.
Need a motion?
So moved. Oh, you moved and seconded, we're ready again.
Questions or comments? All in favor of the contract with the West Virginia Botanic Garden as presented, signified by aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed the same?
Okay, we do have a couple of accounts payable addendums that we need to tackle before we get to our consent agenda. First is accounts payable addendum A, and Vice President Kelly will recuse himself from the vote and leave the room for this.
Who's going to send that back with the notarized forms?
Well, I had my printer in case it was revisions. I've done this for so many years, so thank you so much.
Okay, need a motion?
Superintendent. Superintendent recommends that the board approve accounts payable addendum A as presented.
Need a motion? So I'll move it?
Second.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor of accounts payable addendum A, signified by aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed the same? Okay, next one's Mr. Berry's.
Next is accounts payable addendum B. Member Berry will recuse himself from the vote and he'll leave the room as well. Superintendent recommends that the board approve accounts payable addendum B as presented in your executive file.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I guess I got the. All in favor of accounts payable addendum B as presented, signified by aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed the same? Thank you.
Okay, we do have a lengthy consent agenda here. We didn't quite make double letters, but we got close. Superintendent recommends that the board approve the consent agenda as presented this evening to include item A expenditures exceeding $3,000, item B supplements and transfers, item C, the payment of salaries and accounts payable, item D, the WVU Extension Service Family Nutrition Program, item E, the minutes of your last meeting, item F, the early Headstart July report, item G, the July 2023 early Headstart Finance Document, item H, the July North Central Report, again, related to early Headstart, item I, the July Headstart Finance Report, item J, the early Headstart Health and Safety Checklist, item K, the early Headstart August 23 Report, item L, the early Headstart Governance Screener Document, item M is the Headstart Governance Screener Document, item N is the NCCAA August Report, item O is the August Mental Health Newsletter, item P is the early Headstart September 23 Report, and item Q is the September 23 NCCAA Headstart Report.
Need a motion?
Just want to make sure he was done. Also moved?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments? All right, hearing none, all in favor of consent agenda as presented, signified by aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed the same? Thank you. Board member updates? Anybody have anything?
Just have a quick MPO meeting this Thursday evening. Dan and I'll be here.
I don't have any, but if I did, I'd save it for the next meeting.
I have. I have, I have two. The School for the Deaf and the Blind visited MTEC and it was a magical day, would be to say the least. And number two is I sit in statewide board member legislative things right now, legislative meetings. And the fact that our, that Nicole has missed, not to her detriment, but the fact that we reacted and bought $6,000 of screens to save kids from COVID is the only thing we missed as a school system is unbelievable. The stuff I'm hearing these, the other schools missed is unbelievable. I mean, millions of dollars that they're going to have to figure out how to pay back or the state's going to have to forgive them, the federal government's going to have to forgive them. But they're just, it's the state's fault, it's somebody else's fault, everyone's blaming it on someone else. And my point in this whole thing is our staff and specifically Nicole and her attention to detail deserves a shout out. I appreciate what you do and you keep us. Yeah, but that's unbelievable how good that was. And like I said, it wasn't a mistake, it was a choice we made to buy something we needed for the COVID pandemic.
That wasn't made in West Virginia.
Wasn't.
That was the only, I mean, it wasn't that we inappropriately spent the money, it was that it wasn't made in West Virginia.
And we needed sneeze guards for the kids in there.
We couldn't get it fast enough. And it's a shame that it has to be on the list with all those other more egregious decisions.
And I want to add, that purchase was approved.
Yes.
Prior to us making the purchase.
By the Department.
It was, it was approved. And it was, this is a different agency that is evaluating this. So, I don't believe we made a mistake. We acted after seeking advice and guidance and we did what that guidance told us we could do. So, I don't believe we made any mistakes, so.
Yes, thank you for looking out for us constantly.
Thank you. There's a legislative meeting Thursday, correct, for the group, for the School Board Association?
There is a legislative meeting Thursday at?
2:00.
2:00. I will be there. If anybody wants to go, it's a Zoom meeting, I can pass on the link if anyone wants to be there. Legislative priorities for this session.
Which may already be in the works and too late to stop.
My legislative priority for this session is to get yourself a hat and it needs to be bulletproof because it's just going to be stuff raining down on us. They're just, it's going to be, I mean, maybe not, I might be totally wrong, but it's going to be, it's going to be a good time for a, for a, for a hard hat and just to try to figure out what we're going to do, but.
It won't matter, it'll change a ton.
Anyhow, we'll deal with that after it happens. We can't, we can't do anything besides advise. So, superintendent, are we going to do policies?
I hope so. Should be relatively simple tonight. These are all first reading and second reading, so we'll just move through these as quickly as you'd like to. First is policy 8510 Wellness. This is for first reading. Superintendent recommends that the board approve policy 8510.
I need a motion?
So moved.
Boy, I was trying to go rate the.
Second.
Okay, any questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor of policy 8510 Wellness for first reading, signified by aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed the same?
Next is also for first reading. This is policy 8510.01, Child Nutrition Standards. Superintendent recommends that the board approve policy 8510.01.
Okay, need a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of policy 8510.01, Child Nutrition Standards for first reading, signified by aye?
Aye.
Superintendent?
Policy 8660. This is for first reading. This is transportation of students by private vehicle. vehicles, Superintendent recommends that the board approve Policy 8660 as presented.
Need a motion? So moved.
Second.
Michael's got a second, any questions or comments? Okay, all in favor of Policy 8660, Transportation of Students by Private Vehicle for first reading, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed the same, Superintendent.
Next, we're going to tackle our second reading and adoption for these policies.
Any comments on any policies?
No.
Thank you, same as for that conversation.
First is Policy 3213.03, Self-Harm and Eating Disorders Training, Megan's Law, Superintendent recommends that the board approve Policy 3213.03.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, any questions, comments? All in favor of Policy 3213.03, Self-Harm and Eating Disorders Training, for second reading and adoption, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same. Thank you.
All right, next is Policy 4213.03, Self-Harm and Eating Disorders Training, Megan's Law, again, this is second reading and adoption, Superintendent recommends that the board approve Policy 4213.03.
Need a motion? Also move?
Second.
Thank you.
Lost track of where we're.
Questions or comments? All in favor of Policy 4213.03, Self-Harm and Eating Disorders Training, for second reading and adoption, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same, thank you.
All right, next is Policy 5531.01, Self-Harm and Eating Disorders Signs, Prevention and Treatment, Superintendent recommends that the board approve Policy 5531.01.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second, questions or comments? All in favor of Policy 5531.01, Self-Harm and Eating Disorders Signs, Prevention and Treatment for second reading and adoption, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed the same, Superintendent.
Policy 3242, Professional Learning for Educators, Superintendent recommends that the board approve Policy 3242.
Motion? So moved.
Second.
Okay, any questions or comments? All in favor of Policy 3242, Professional Learning for Educators, for second reading and adoption, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same, thank you, Superintendent.
Our final policy to deal with this evening is Policy 8120, Volunteers, Superintendent recommends that the board approve Policy 8120.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Michael seconded that, any questions or comments? All right, all in favor of Policy 8120, Volunteers for second reading and adoption, signify by aye.
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 Opposed the same, great work, Jennifer. Superintendent, personnel.
Okay, we are down to personnel, look at our personnel list to begin with, I don't have any changes to that, Superintendent recommends that the board approve the personnel list as presented.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Nancy can have it.
Questions or comments? All in favor of Personnel List as Presented, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed the same, Superintendent.
Next is New Positions, I do have one that I'm going to request this evening, this is a mental health specialist, it would be for 200 days full time, this will be a split compensated position at .6, paid out of federal Headstart Funds, and .4, paid out of county funds, Superintendent recommends that the board approve the addition of a mental health specialist.
Need a motion?
Go ahead, Nancy.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, any questions or comments?
Yeah, is this, is this in the central office, or will this be attached to certain schools, itinerant?
Donna, you want to kind of give an overview of how we're going to use this person?
Absolutely, and you heard some of that here this evening, it will be itinerant, it will absolutely be within the schools, it will work out, we already have one individual in the Office of Early Childhood, this will be a second one, because the needs are so great at these pre-Ks that we are overwhelmed with needs.
Good, good, I've got it, that's for the schools.
Yes.
Thank you for the clarification.
Okay, any other questions? All in favor of the new positions as. Sorry, so maybe.
Do we have to vote?
Yes.
We do have to vote.
We have not voted.
Yeah, all in favor of new positions as presented, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed the same. Superintendent.
All right, we do have an addendum, I don't have any changes to the addendum, Superintendent recommends that the board approve the personnel list addendum as presented.
Yeah, need a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any questions or comments? All in favor of the Personnel List Addendum as Presented, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed the same. All righty.
I am moving that we have a short executive session for personnel and property.
Like the short word. Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same, thank you.